The Wetzel County Board of Education to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Castello and follow with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You may be seated. Let the record show that all four board members are present, Mr. Glasscock, Mr. Castello, Mrs. Foner, Mrs. Nice, and Mrs. Mitchell. We will now have the hearing on the closure of Payton City High School and its consolidation into Magnolia High School and New Martinsville School. We'll have the summary of the proposed action presented by administration.
Good evening. Wetzel County Schools is at a crossroads, facing significant demographic challenges that require thoughtful consideration and strategic plan. The population of Wetzel County has declined by 16.6% since 2010, from 16,537 to an estimated 13,786 in 2024, outpacing both the national growth rate of 7.7% and the 4.3% decline seen in West Virginia. Correspondingly, student enrollment in Wetzel County has dropped by approximately 800 students over the same time period, placing pressure on our schools and their ability to provide a robust educational experience for all students. Magnolia High School and Payton City High School, both located in riverfront communities in Wetzel County, together accounting for about two-thirds of the county's total student enrollment. Over the last decade, both schools have experienced substantial declines in enrollment. Magnolia High School, which served 420 students in 2014, has seen that number drop to 303 students in the 23-24 school year. Similarly, Payton City High School, which had 127 students in grades nine through 12, 10 years ago, is down to just 107. This ongoing enrollment decline reflected in the 24-25 school year figures. 286 students at Magnolia and 96 at Payton City has led to the proposal to consolidate these schools and integrate the seventh and eighth grades into New Martinsville School. The consolidation is a proactive response to the diminishing student population and underutilized facilities. New Martinsville School, while also experiencing fluctuations in enrollment, has significant unused capacity and will absorb the additional students from Payton City without surpassing its capacity of 1,309 students. When it comes to the physical infrastructure of our schools, the need for upgrades is clear. Magnolia High School, which is sized and better facilities, requires approximately 16.6 million in improvements, including HVAC upgrades and enhancement to the athletic facilities. In contrast, Payton City High School, with its more limited site, would require 7.5 million in renovations to meet even basic standards. However, the small size of Payton City's campus and its limited room for expansion to make it unsustainable long-term option, makes it, I'm sorry, makes it an unsustainable long-term option. Magnolia's larger, more versatile campus with necessary improvements provides a stronger foundation for meeting the educational needs. From a financial standpoint, the proposed consolidation offers savings. Wetzel County Schools anticipates the average savings of $358,722, primarily from reduced utility and maintenance costs at the closed Payton City High School. While staffing levels will remain unchanged across both professional and service personnel, operational costs will be optimized through this consolidation, ensuring more efficient use of our resources. The restructuring will allow the county to better allocate funds, ensuring the continued sustainability of Magnolia High School and addressing financial insufficiencies tied to under-enrolled students, schools. A key benefit of this consolidation is that it will not result in job losses. Teachers particularly will benefit from reduced class preparation burdens, allowing them to focus on future, fewer courses, and offer a broader array of electives. This also allows for more efficient scheduling, leading to a more diverse and robust educational program. Any minimal staff reduction will occur gradually through attrition, ensuring a smooth transition. In terms of student transportation, the proposed changes will result in manageable adjustments, while some students will experience slightly longer travel times, approximately 15 extra minutes for those from Payton City. These increases are within acceptable limits. A new bus route will be developed to ensure that all students are transported safely and efficiently to the new consolidated school without a need for waivers. These changes aim to improve operational efficiency while maintaining student safety and convenience. Academically, Wetzel County Schools is committed to providing high-quality education that meets the needs of all students, in alignment with the federal, state, and local regulations. By consolidating Payton City High School into Magnolia High School and integrating the seventh and eighth grade into New Martinsville School, the district will be positioned to offer enhanced educational opportunities for all students. This move is in full compliance with policies such as 2419, 2510, 2520, which ensure that students receive a comprehensive, standards-based education. The consolidation also aligns with Policies 6200 and 6204, which are designed to improve educational efficiency and equity. Finally, it is important to recognize the impact on the community served by these schools. Payton City High School and Magnolia High School are central to their respective communities, providing more than just educational services. They are also hubs for social activities and community events. The closure of Payton City High School could affect these vital community connections, making it more difficult to attract families to the area. However, the consolidation of Payton City High School into Magnolia High School offers an opportunity to build new community relationships and strengthen support for the county's educational system. By consolidating resources and expanding the scope of programs available, Wetzel County can cultivate new partnerships that will benefit both students and the broader community. In conclusion, the proposed consolidation of Payton City and Magnolia High Schools represents a strategic and necessary step for Wetzel County Schools. It is an opportunity to address declining enrollment, improve facilities, and optimize financial resources, maintain a high-quality educational opportunities for all students. The consolidation will better position Wetzel County for future, ensuring sustainability of our schools and the continued success of our students. Thank you.
We will now have the delegations and public comments section of this meeting. In accordance with West Virginia Policy 6204 and Wetzel County Policy BDDH, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of five minutes to present the remarks. This policy ensures that all individuals have equal opportunity to address the board in a fair and timely manner. During the five-minute speaking period, any questions or clarifications raised by the speaker will not be addressed immediately. Instead, in accordance with Policy 6204.3.4.A.8, all questions will be answered at the conclusion of the speaker's allotted time. This structure helps maintain order and ensures that each speaker has the full opportunity to present their views without interruption and that they are able to use the entire five minutes they are entitled to. We ask that all participants respect this time limitation to facilitate an orderly and efficient meeting. Again, each person will have up to five minutes to speak. We ask that we all remain respectful. Board members may not respond to the delegations. All comments are to be made to the board, but not to the audience. Comments are not to be of a personal nature. We do not want to defame anyone. The board is not responsible for the speaker's comments. The speakers are responsible for their comments, and the board president has the authority to maintain order at all meetings. Our first person to speak will be Chris McGinnis.
All right. Hey, yeah. As I said, what a year and a half it's been. We're all exhausted. I'm sure you guys are too. I'm certain you'll be glad when these hearings are over, to an extent we will too. But I ask you tonight, I know you're tired and you probably came down here knowing you're going to hear a lot of speakers and prepared to kind of steel yourself against the barrage that's coming. Everybody knows how it's going to be in Payton City, I'm sure. But I'm asking you tonight to keep an open mind, to not be steeled against these things, but to actually be sensitive to them and to consider them. I'm sure in your mind, you've just thought these things over, you've made your mind up to an extent. Let us give you some facts and honestly consider them. Allow your minds the possibility to be changed. I'm certain that you will. Now, hang on because I have to talk fast. First off, I believe we started the night with a good basis for what I'd like to speak to, which are certain misrepresentations. The word "lies" might be inflammatory, but maybe you classified as that. For instance, the very reason that we were told that there was an urgency for this act to get it done by next year, and I've even heard board members echo those sentiments in private, was the teacher shortage, the crisis. And yet, that wasn't brought up in the statement to start things. The reasons that were given, actually the words were "has led to this proposal." What came before it was population decline and student enrollment. That's not an emergency to get this done next year, as it was stated. So, that was kind of a misrepresentation. We had all the water bottles, remember, all the positions? And I believe maybe that went away because the fact is, if you limit it down to what we're really doing, which involves high schools, not elementary or middle schools, Payton City Middle School, but that's another topic, the shortage is really at that level. It's not at core-class high school levels. And I'm not going to ask a question about it, I'm sure somebody will later, but I'd just like to present some other things. At the 10-14 special meeting, I'm sorry, Ms. Mitchell said, "The majority of community members want a centrally-located high school." In these two impact statements, I don't see anything referencing the final goal. What are our assurances? You tell me your final goal is a consolidated school for the entire county. Ms. Porter's response, and I've taken out some things just to make it quicker, she basically said, "When we had our work session, we talked about a lot of things, four schools to two schools and then consolidating to one." She said, "We've looked at pieces of property. We'd have to find land. I know there's talk about why we're going to consolidate and change colors," she said. "That part would have to be voted on. Nothing's 100%. But if we can find a plot of land," and she went on, "she ended with, "As far as the colors, we'll have to figure out what to do about that." Again, when discussing the colors of rebranding, Mr. Glasscock asked if it was financially responsible to go through this rebranding just to do it again in a few years? And again, the response was, "We're not voting on that. We'll have to make a decision on that. Make a decision." The whole premise of this, beyond the teacher crisis, which we've already given up on apparently, was, "This is not a merger, it's a consolidation. And it's a consolidation because we're going to get rid of the school colors and mascots, and it's all going to be new, and then we're going to go to one school eventually, and a lot of people are on board for it. Even people in Payton City, a lot of them are fine with the idea of one school. You'd really not get a ton of blowback on that, I don't think." But the problem is, is we wanted to sell this as that and then go to a primary step where there are zero guarantees, but once we get this primary step in, then we can discuss it. The whole premise was that it would not be any kind of a merger. The entire basis was to make things fair for all students in all attended areas. While I think even the temporary plan with rebranding fails after Payton City and 100, now that's even become, "We'll have to make a decision on that. We'll have to figure out what to do about that." What we have here is a classic bait and switch, a sales tactic to get someone to do what you want by promising something different than what you're ultimately probably going to deliver. It's a good time to bring up the history that the board seems to either be forgetting or choosing to ignore, or it's just been drawn out so long, probably it's just not in the front of your mind anymore, so let me bring it up. This is tactic number three in trying to shut down Payton City High School or merge it into Magnolia High School. The first attempt began about three days into Mrs. Porter's employment here, and was argued basically as a common-sense decision. The board didn't even see a need to vote on it, there was no support for it. And yet, the very next meeting, Ms. Porter brought it up a second time. So, the board said, "All right, we'll vote on it." Ended up being a 5-0 vote. I know the membership has changed, so maybe the vote wouldn't be the same today, I don't know. But at least then, the vote forced that decision to be abided by. Well, then tactic two was, "There's an imminent danger at Payton City High School." Well, we took that to court and found that to be not true either. It was a unilateral decision. Ultimately, the court decided that Ms. Porter had committed an illegal closure of the school. How an employee commits an illegal act in the execution of their job and is not disciplined in any way, I'll never understand. But anyway, tactic one failed, tactic two failed, now we have tactic three, or including some other people, but it was sold to you as a definite rebranding and consolidation. And now, all the things that you were promised are a maybe, if, we'll decide on that later. Nothing's guaranteed, and you're leaving that decision in the hands of somebody that the court has proven can't be trusted.
Our next speaker will be Stacy Yoho.
Attrition. As a former business owner, I clearly understand the definition of attrition as it applies to business. Attrition is also defined as the process of reducing something's strength or effectiveness through sustained attack or pressure. Forgive me, but the past two years have led myself and others to believe that the term "attrition" is being used in both terms. I go back to the idea from the West Virginia Standards for Effective Schools, a clear and focused mission. This also guides our counting. We have yet to understand a clear and focused mission. When Ms. Porter arrived, we immediately went to all that Mr. McGinnis just led you through. Merging the schools with little explanation, then shortly after the board voted that down, we were told that year by Ms. Porter that there will be tiers come riff and transfer time. Then, we fast-forward to the illegal closure of this school. I'm not going to revisit those details because the damage from that is something that we still deal with daily. Now, here we are again, this time with an emergency staffing crisis, which leads me to my list of questions. What caused the lack of staff at Payton City High School? Did you do exit interviews and follow-ups as you said you would? And how can you guarantee that teachers will want to remain employed here and not find other jobs? Do we currently have certified staff working in non-teaching positions? Today, we sit here again with a new narrative, attendance, underutilized facilities, upgrading athletic facilities, and savings. Then, there's that pesky formula that will come back into the picture, resulting in more attrition, riffs, and transfers, though the State Department itself says it's flawed and doesn't understand it. I remember being at Magnolia when the amount of teachers there, Mr. Castello himself, we had students of about 500. There won't be that many students at this school, so how many teachers, this is another question, how many teachers do you truly need? And the biggest question that I have that I would like answered is, how do we trust you? With no clear and focused mission, you have divided communities. You state that Wetzel County is our community, and yes, it is, comprised of four communities, two of which you have treated as if they do not matter. The schools and people in them have been treated differently, as if they do not matter. How do we trust that you will keep your word? When this process began, you were to meet with all of us and discuss this process. Did you do that, and if not, why? How do we trust that you will make equitable decisions when key people like our principals are left out of being invited to work sessions and meetings? Finally, number seven. The Standards for Effective Schools for the State of West Virginia discusses family and community partnerships. While some say it is not your responsibility to be loyal to the communities, I disagree. It is the board and the county office's responsibility to remember where these children come from. You have torn this community, Wetzel County, apart. The communities fostered the children that attend your schools. Partnerships must exist between the schools and communities to support academic, social, and emotional, and the physical needs of our students. How do you intend to repair the damage that you have done to these communities in order to make your efforts successful? It once was common for teachers to work between both schools, part-time Magnolia, part-time at Payton City. Why is that not happening now, especially when we have some teachers that are certified in non-teaching positions? You just stated that this was a proactive measure to address these issues that you bring to the table. There are alternative methods to address what you have presented, and we don't have to wait, or while we are waiting, but now my question shifts. Explain the long-term option that you stated when we got here, in your statement. What is the long-term option? Is it Magnolia High School? Or is it one school for the entire county? I'm sorry, but it appears that it is Magnolia High School. Students in Magnolia and Valley are already working on consolidation colors, at least Valley specifically has already had their committees put together. These students have been treated unfairly. Reset this path. Make this an equitable move, one move for every person. We are asking you today to please find a new way to do this. Find the ground, build a school, but make it equitable for everyone.
Is that on? Can you hear me?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's much better. I'm going to answer some of these staffing questions. So, do we do exit interviews right now? We don't. And some of that is because we've definitely had people resign at 10:30 at night and not come to work the next day. It's hard to interview somebody when they leave, when you're in bed. How do we keep people? The board has done some proactive things to keep people around, and I can say from going to job fairs and things like that, that they do help. Our pay scale is very good. It hurts us that we're surrounded by other counties who, the pay scale is also equally good. If we were an island, it would be a whole lot easier. As far as folks at the secondary level, who we don't have filled with certified teachers right now, it's, in the secondary world, it's close to 10. Give or take, we have some folks on alternative certification.
It was just two at Magnolia, is what you said, at Magnolia High School, correct?
It's one. I'm talking to all secondary.
Well, I'm just talking about these two schools right now, because that's what we're here for.
Okay. You've got about five.
Five.
And when I look at my entire secondary, I have some, and I can't say anything yet because these people haven't made any official moves, but I fear I'm going to need a couple more at a couple other schools before the semester's over, that I'm concerned about. And we also have some, you know, we fill some of these with virtual folks, which is not what we want to do, but we've had no choice as far as that goes.
Did we look at the options, though? That didn't quite answer my question. Do we have teachers that hold secondary certifications, working in non-teaching positions?
I'm sure we do, but you realize that I can't force somebody to take a job, right?
But we can, but can we eliminate positions that are unnecessary and not required by the state of West Virginia?
You can always do that, but then those folks have to bid on jobs. Keep in mind that you cannot transfer somebody into a vacancy, it's illegal.
That makes sense, but I...
I don't know if it makes sense. I wish it was another way.
Does it make sense policy-wise?
But it's the law.
But, in the law-wise, but...
It's the law. So, the answer is that, yes, but if those folks don't bid on jobs, it doesn't help And then, you know, I'm going to speak to the long-term option, because I've been involved in it quite a bit. I feel there is a commitment to moving to one school. I will say that I never would have dreamed that part of my job would be exploring land and a side-by-side with a superintendent of schools and a realtor and a landowner. That kind of stuff happens. So, there's been some active looking to actually look at what one school would look like and what we could do for our students. So, I feel that's an actual thing that's happening. I have a seventh grader, and I have a lot of hope that that seventh grader will graduate from a one high school in Wetzel County Schools.
With the long-term option, I don't know that that really clarified a whole lot, because there's been a lot of rumors, I guess, that nobody at this level has been able to lay it to rest. We are just looking, however, in the beginning, what you just stated was that the long-term sustainable school is Magnolia High School. Is that what you are looking at as the long-term sustainable school, right now?
So, as far as that impact statement goes, for a couple of years to get us through to a new school, that's what that means. But there, I feel there is a very huge commitment to one school.
That's not what that says, though. This goes back to the trust. So, can we go back to that question? How do we trust you? It's fair. I'm not talking to you, Ben.
Okay.
I know that I did not grow up in this community, however, I did grow up in West Virginia, the Panhandle, and for the last 31 years, I've dedicated my life to doing what is right for students. I know that this is not hugely popular, but I do know that we do need to make some change and we need to look forward to the future. Today, today, I went out and looked at land. I have to find the right piece, actually, we need to find the right piece and then bring it to the board to move forward. I would love nothing more than during my tenure to find land and start the building process for our students in Wetzel County. And I know that you're talking about trust, and I know that we can swing things different ways, but I'm telling you that I want nothing more than to have one facility that serves all of the students, all of their needs. We currently don't even have a track for our students in Wetzel County. There are a lot of things that your students, your children deserve.
I don't know that that answers the question. How do you intend to repair the damage that you've done to these communities? Because I think you can agree that there's, you've referred to Wetzel County Schools as the community, you have said that. How do we repair the damage?
To this.
Count. How do we repair the damage to this county? How do we repair this? How do you repair this as a school? Because this, West Virginia, like I just said, the Standards for Effective Schools are these partnerships. What is your plan to correct it?
So, unfortunately, we have people on both sides of the fence, and I am working very hard to make sure that we do what is best for all of the kids. The trust will have to be built as we go, and you'll have to trust the process as we go through this. And we are working as a team. This is not just a one-person show. This is a lot of people spending a lot of time, working to make sure we do the best for our students in Wetzel County. I can't give you a definitive answer. Trust is something that I'm going to have to earn from you, obviously.
Yes, back to the trust. One of the questions that I asked was, when we began this process, you all said that you were going to meet with the staff at every single school and discuss with us what this would look like before we came into here. The board members asked for that. Did you do that?
I have met with many, many staff and teachers.
Did you meet with the staff specifically regarding this issue, like you said you would, at the work session?
I have.
You did not at Payton City High School.
I'm sorry.
Next person to speak is Matt Canard, and I do ask the audience, you do need to remain quiet so that we can hear the questions and the answers to.
Good evening. As a 35-year teacher veteran, 20 in Wetzel County, serving under nine superintendents, each with a different plan and agenda, as a parent of students who graduated from a consolidated high school in Tyler County, I can tell you, having witnessed firsthand how my children were impacted as an outsider at Tyler County. The life lessons that they learned, though my wife has been a resident of Tyler County, a graduate of Sistersville High School, and having coached at Tyler for 15 years, it was a life lesson I wish my children had never had. The things they were forced to deal with as an outsider has impacted them to the point that none of my three children will attend any event at Tyler Consolidated. That's unfortunate, because what that says to me is, though this was in the best interest of Tyler County to shut down Sistersville and Middleburn and create a consolidated school, many things have not healed, the community has not truly improved, and had it not been for gas and oil money, which we have been told multiple times cannot be relied on for future staffing and for other things within this county, Tyler would not have what it has today. My children did not have any of the special advantages that we have talked about within this county that Tyler now offers. So, having said all of that, and thinking about these things, when we talk about consolidation, we need to be reminded of the goals that the state has, three and four, about we are to prepare, our students and our teachers need to be improving individually to do our job better. I can tell you that the only way that's going to happen is to change the morale in this community, and by community, I mean our teaching staff. Since 22-23 school year, our teacher absenteeism has increased by 30%. That is an astronomical number that should not happen. Sitting on our board is a person who I know well and remember when she retired because of the "resign, relocate, or retire" phrase. If you didn't buy in... if you didn't buy in to what was being presented. We've had nine teachers leave Payton City, and I did have, not exit interviews, but conversations with each of them, because I am the last one left from the original group, when Warren Grace was principal here. Each one of them made the statement, "I would love to stay in Payton City, but there is no job security there." Mrs. Miller, one of our former principals, even apologized to our staff, as she said, "I am returning to Magnolia to make sure I have a job." That's wrong. Plain and simple. It's wrong when I'm working in my yard and my daughter calls to say, "Dad, what are you gonna do for a job next year?" And I'm like, "What are you talking about? Payton City's just been shut down." As a teacher and educator, I would hope that we can be respected on a higher level. So, that brings me to the following questions. Since there have been no staff meetings led by a county administrator in Payton City since September 22 of 2023, when we were told that everything would be transparent, and I heard that exact same phrase again last summer, how often can we expect to have meetings in the future with the staff that are infected, moving forward in the decision-making process? Or will we have a voice? That's question one. Question two, how can the continued current or lack of transparency and ability to build confidence with staff and a lack of effort to correct low morale be rectified? And what plans can be put in place to build that trust with teachers, children, and parents within the community? Question three, when will this start and how will it be implemented?
Questions are done. Would you like to speak to those questions?
How often can we expect to have meetings with the staff in the future? A lot. Because we're going to have to come up systematically together with Magnolia staff and Payton City High School staff as to the classes that people are most certified to teach, lessening the burden so they don't have to teach all of one curriculum to all students and all grade levels. So, that is going to have to be a team effort. We've already actually told our principals to do preliminary looks at their staff, to make sure what they need. I actually talked with a staff member today, in hopes that this person will go ahead and take the AP course testing so that AP chemistry can be taught next year. And we also looked at, as well as that, is looking at biology and some of the math classes that we need. So, those, those questions do need to happen, those meetings do need to happen, because we need to make sure we have the right personnel in front of our students that best serve them. How can the continued, continued lack of transparency and build trust? Trust is something that I'm going to have to build with a lot of people. And I don't take that lightly, and I know that that needs to be something that I need to work towards transparency-wise. I am also working on making sure that I'm as transparent as possible. We have tried to come up with different ways to make sure we're getting our message out, and make sure all of our documentation is available. We have answered all FOIA requests and gotten the information out there. So, I continue to work on that, and I continue to want to work on building your trust. Thank you.
Okay, what about the part about the correcting the low morale within our staff? Because it's not just Payton City, it's the staff across the county. I mean, we've lost how many teachers across the county?
So, this year, our whole kind of premise was transforming our challenges into successes. So, we started out the year with Ruby Payne, having a speaker come in to help us. We've got some book studies, we have our directors working on different items. We know that it's hard, we know that teaching is very difficult. We know the burden on our teachers is extreme. It's not just here in Wetzel County, it's in the entire state of West Virginia, it's in the entire nation. I just picked up a book today from Mr. Houston, "How Do We Stay in the Teaching Profession When We're Done Teaching?" So, this is something that we do need to work on. Last year, we were able to give a spring bonus and also a significant raise to our teachers. We do keep that in mind. As Mr. McPherson said, we do offer a very competitive raise, as well some fringe benefits for our faculty and staff. We meet with our principals regularly. I just had about an hour and 20-minute conversation with the principal yesterday on things that we can do to help improve and appreciate the people and the hard work that they do for us each and every day. Teaching is hard. It was hard 30 years ago, it's even tougher today. When I work with our special ed director, Michelle Hogan, we talk extensively on making sure that the students that have behaviors, because we're seeing a lot more of that in our schools at this time, making sure that we can implement programming properly, to make sure that all of our students are getting what they need. So, we are continuing to work on different avenues to help work on support. We also just implemented a team of core lead teachers throughout all the programmatic levels. We met with them, Mr. Houston and Mrs. Chambers and I met with them, and we talked about things that they need, and they're going to be a liaison link towards the central office and our schools.
Okay, that's not exactly what I was asking, but I understand that you've answered as you can.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilman Bill Bell.
Thank you, Madam President. Per West Virginia Board of Education Policy 2322, as Chair of the Local School Improvement Council for Payton City High School, it is my duty to give you the response to the impact statement. To be frank, the Local School Improvement Council of Payton City High School hereby rejects and refutes the impact statement supporting data provided by the Wetzel County Board of Education for the following reasons. Number one, this consolidation was initiated in an illegal fashion under the false pretenses of student safety and environmental concerns. The proposed closure was overturned by the Second Circuit Court of West Virginia in August 2024. This consolidation is politically motivated by current county administration and financially influential county residents as seen as a, quote, "cost-saving measure." It is cited on page five of the impact statement that the closure would save the county approximately $358,722 per year. This is only a small fraction of the budget for the entire county, as a comparison, Magnolia High School costs $5.3 million annually to operate, and New Martinsville School costs $12.8 million, found on page 16 of the document. Number two, those opposing the consolidation, including myself, have been retaliated against in an illegal fashion. No less than five employees of Wetzel County Schools have been released from their responsibilities, reprimanded, or denied advancement, or additional compensated opportunities as a direct result of their advocacy. This demonstrates the Wetzel County Board of Education's attentions to silence critics and push the consolidation agenda. Number three, the professional educator shortage is not a direct result of community schools being spread thin. Instead, the LSIC finds the employee culture is, to be frank, toxic and abusive, thus causing employees to leave or detracting potential employees from applying for positions. We find that a change in the county-level administration way alleviates and addresses this specific concern. Number four, there are a number of errors concerning statements in this document, some but not all include. On page 20, no staff are proposed to go to New Martinsville School with a 7th grade student population. On page 18, the cost incurred to New Martinsville School would increase with a merge of 7th grade population, as opposed to the document saying on page 18, once again, to being unchanged. It does not take 58 minutes to drive 5 minute miles on a school bus, even with stops in place. And finally, bringing the schools together would not, quote, "foster a stronger sense of unity and shared purpose," as noted on page 27. There have been documented cases of harassment by students and adults toward others of opposing views and communities. This county has been irreparably damaged and divided for this reason. Therefore, the official recommendations of the Payton City High School LSIC are to, one, terminate any action leading to the closure of Payton City High School at this time. Two, terminate any action leading to the closure of Hundred High School at this time. Three, we call on the Wetzel County Board of Education to investigate and analyze employee climate and morale, thus addressing vacancy issues. Four, consider allowing teachers on a voluntary or compensatory basis, I'm sorry, to split their duties between multiple schools when teaching in certified areas. This practice is currently in place on a limited basis at this time, but can be grown enough if enough educators are willing to do this. Five, engage directly with local colleges to recruit teachers into a career with Wetzel County Schools. Teacher residency programs can allow students to complete student teaching obligations while promoting the benefits of working with the school district. My previous colleagues have asked questions that frankly, I was intending to ask, so I will defer my time to the students and community members who wish to speak. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Our next delegation, Samantha Smith.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Smith, and I've been teaching English at Payton City High School for six years. Altogether, I've been a teacher for 12 years. And I can honestly say that my years as an educator in Payton City High School have been the best of my career. I know that you are not interested in the difficulties that our students have faced over the last few years, while we have dealt with the fallout from this board office and board members discussing consolidation. I know you are not concerned in hearing about how many students have struggled with depression, because they don't want to be pulled away from where they feel welcomed and accepted. You probably do not want to hear about how many of our students consistently say they enjoy coming to school here, because the students and staff are positive, encouraging, and caring. Most likely, it will not interest you to know, we have a number of students that have attended school in other places before, and they state they feel more confident about themselves and are respected more as individuals here at Payton City High School. My students are making great strides in identifying literary elements, using vocabulary, composing well-thought-out writing. I've been able to see growth in all of my students, and I am fully confident that I will continue to see them grow and progress this year. I can say this of all of the classes where I teach. I can see many of my high school students developing their writing past that of high school, into college-level composition. I also see many of these high school students making deep and thoughtful connections with the texts that we read. These students are able to learn and progress in this way, because we are teaching them. However, of course, you don't care about the progress or the great things they have done so far this year or in previous years. You don't find it important to consider how they've strived to reach this point. The faculty and staff here pour their blood, sweat, and tears into these students' lives and school careers, but that would probably not be interesting to you either. It is quite unfortunate that you do not appear interested in everything that applies to the growth and health of our students. Maybe if you showed more interest in these regards, then we would not be here today, having this meeting. Maybe if you thought more about what these students are actually saying, instead of what some businesses or individuals in certain areas of the county want, then we could focus on educating individuals for success and encouraging their mental and emotional wellness. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As a wise man once told me, "Go Cats!"
Our next speaker is Joseph Henry.
Hello. I am a student of Payton City High School, and I hope to whatever God you believe in, if any at all, that you listen to myself and every other student that comes after me. But I have been going to this school for a little over, under 12 years now. And for the first time that I have been in this town, I have gone into our museum and saw all the history that you wish to take away, all the tradition, all the culture. And I personally find that to be a disgrace, because one of the main points that people are supposed to do in the present is not only to protect that, but to push forward to the future, especially with children. And I have seen the exact opposite happen here with the board, with our superintendent, and with a handful of other people. And that's not how this should be. We should be pushing for students to feel safe, we should be pushing for them to feel that they can get a proper education in where they are going. Because I don't think that you can get a proper education if you want to send us to a consolidated school where you lose your name and you get a number. Because I have teachers in my school that I have never been in the classroom with that know my name. They know me, they will come and talk to me every day, see how I am doing. You can't do that if you've got 30, 40 kids in a classroom, because some of those students aren't gonna be able to get the help they need. And that's not how it should be. I've said that a lot. But I will get into my questions, which are unfortunately, all directed at Ms. Porter and not at the board, which is, why did you decide to run in this county when you do not live here? Because that's a question I've had. Why is it that our last principal, Nicole Shipman, and you both have a previous connection with working at John Marshall? And have you come up with any plan, if this does go through, to mitigate bullying, the possibilities of suicide, and harassment? That is all.
As I previously stated, and thank you for speaking, that gives you, gives a lot of courage for you for doing that. I'm, I'm a lifelong West Virginian. So, I have worked in different counties in West Virginia, as do many people and many colleagues. So, when I saw the opportunity to make a difference in Wetzel County, I decided to apply and interview for this job, because I felt I could make a difference for you. My connection with Nicole Shipman is not relevant for this hearing. And mitigating bullying and harassment, we work every single day with our principals and our teachers, to make sure that we have systems in place, such as social workers, CIS people in each district, guidance counselors, to make sure that we keep on top of that as much as we can. We do like to keep that open communication with our students. And as you said, this is a small school, and we would remain a small school after the consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Rataball.
Good evening. My name is Michael Rataball. I am a, obviously, a student of Payton City High School. Honestly, I would just like to jump straight into a few questions, along with a few statements. My first question is, kind of a mixed with a statement. I have, I also recently went down to the museum of Payton City. I saw the history we have, and I also would like to acknowledge the history that Magnolia High School has. Each school and each community is known for having their own unique history. I would like to know how you plan to protect this history, as well as also creating new history at a new school. Second question, my classmate also asked, but how do you plan to address the mental hea-, mental health crises that has been started due to the actions the board has taken regarding Payton City High School and Magnolia as a merger? I mainly would like to point to the board's indecisiveness when it came to closing Payton City. It was open, it wasn't, it was open, it wasn't. You have went back and forth on the matter, so I would just like some clarity how the mental health crisis plans to be evaluated, given the circumstances. And really, the last question is more of a statement than a question, but it does, it does transition into a question. Consolidation is something that can be a good change. If all schools were to come into one, I feel like that could foster a lot of power within Wetzel County. But this isn't what's being done. Currently, the plan is, or what was originally planned was for all schools to unite under one. This has been changed to what seems to be, from the student body, our perspective, is just Magnolia being fought for. Everybody wants to consolidate into Magnolia, or not everybody, but Payton City being pushed to Magnolia, when this isn't what the plan was. This was a plan for unity, not for division, which this has created. There are cases of harassment, there are people being pestered for going over, my teacher, Mr. Bell, brought up incidents that have happened already. Clearly, this does not show that if the schools were merged, there would not be unity. This is damage to the community, damage to the student body. This is something I believe that cannot be repaired in the short amount of time it would take to merge. There has been an attack, in my opinion, from what the student body can perceive, as an attack on the student body of different methods to try to take the school down. Firstly, there was an illegal method that a court struck down when the school was illegally closed under the grounds of there being a, quote, "imm." closed under the grounds of there being a quote "imminent danger" to Peyton City High School, which the EPA then later came out and stated, and I quote, "There were no imminent health risks." Typically, this would mean the school would remain open, things would go back to being as they were. This did not happen. It only appeared as if the attacks got closer in personal rather than for the health of students. This was then switched to staffing. This was switched to staffing was the next event. I believe this issue arose when this division first was announced and was first tried. Teachers were afraid to stay because they did not know that there would be job security. So I believe the staffing issue was partially caused by the board's own grasp to try to merge schools in a hurry. I also believe that this staffing issue is one of your own creation. My father is, has several master's degrees in education, and my stepmother, who has probably five years of social work with special needs children, both of them have tried to apply. Neither of them got a call, neither of them got a voicemail, neither of them got a letter in the mail, which I believe is highly ear- ear- sorry, it's not professional at all. Thirdly, there was budget. I would leave the budget statements to Mr. Bell yet again, as he stated Magnolia High Schools and New Martinsville budget, which highly exceeds ours. I also would like to state on that, that the board spent an estimated $80,000 on the court case to shut down Peyton City High School, which that could have been used to upgrade things, like Cassie Porter has stated, the sporting equipment. You said we were lacking a track, which that money could have been used to fund, and now it is with people, you said there isn't enough population in Peyton City High School. That could have also been caused by the merger. So ultimately, I would just like to ask, what other reasons are there to consolidate other than your own personal needs as a board?
Thank you, Michael. Gives a lot of courage to stand up in front of us tonight. Thank you. There is a mental health crisis 100% nationwide, worldwide. We're in a very tough time with the economy, with what we just went through politically. Yes, this has had some impact that we probably did not have the foresight to see the amount of impact, but we will, and we promise that we will address that. This past summer, when we had shut down Peyton City, we did offer counseling services. It was brought to our attention, that was a great need, and we do. So we do take into consideration what you need, and we will keep those services in place for as long as you need those places and services. We can't talk about personnel, you talked a little bit about that, but we can't talk about that here tonight. And just so you know, Michael, I don't have a personal agenda. My agenda is to do what is best for student education. Education is a property right, and once you have that, nobody can take it away from you. It also is very impactful for the economy because when we educate our students and provide for them the education that they need, then they have options, they have opportunities to go to college, or trade school, or into the workforce. So our job as a school board is to make sure that we are providing you the best education we can possibly provide you. So reasons to consolidate are, I know you think that they have different aspects such as teacher shortage, that's a national problem as well. Education, we are not offering the best education that we can, you deserve better, and that's what we're going to give to you. So again, I appreciate you speaking tonight, and I hope that I answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Izzy Anderson.
I come fourth year today as a student of Peyton City High School. It is currently my junior year, going on to be my senior year next. I am a band member and a Mufti student. I have been going to Peyton City since kindergarten. Peyton City schools and community are all I have ever known. Another thing is, I am best friends with Dalton Hayes and a lot of other students being negatively affected by this merge. Do you understand how heartbreaking it is to watch the town and its people suffer? Watching everyone mentally struggle while struggling myself, it feels like I'm dying. Watching people's color drain from their face is like I'm losing everything at once. As a band member, I've waited for years to be a senior and to have my senior banner, to be a role model for underclassmen, to create memories, to motivate everyone to do better, and to be able to call it my band. I want my last year of band camp with my people. I want what everyone else deserves. I want my senior year with my friends, teachers, and peers. The teachers here put in a lot of work and dedication to their students. Teachers here make me feel seen. To be able to stand before you and say that these people have saved my life is an understatement. I am thankful for my community and the way it gives to all. I want to graduate from Peyton City and proudly say that I did. These traditions build families and memories that could never be replaced by anything. I stand before you as someone who does struggle, who understands as a person how, how things benefit other people, but I think there is ways around this that will benefit us all. Personally, I think what the biggest problem is, is we want the truth. We want, we want things to be put out in an understanding way. To be able to know that my, during the summer, to be able to know that my school was getting shut down was very heartbreaking to me, and it did cause a lot of problems. We just want visibility, we just want fairness, we just want our community.
The next speaker is Dalton Hayes.
Good evening, board members and everyone. You all know me, so I don't think I need to introduce myself, but I just want to give some kudos to Izzy. She's not a very social person, and for her to come up here and do that, that's amazing. I want to start with my speech here. I know that you all have heard from me many times, but here I am again. I would just like to talk about some things. When I testified to keep this school open in July, I did not have to do that. I went out of my comfort zone and fought for this school because it was what saved me when I was at my lowest. And lately, I've been going through quite a lot, and the stress from this school situation only makes it worse. To be honest, I've been struggling mentally, and I know that many others have been too, and the added stress from this school closure makes it much, much worse. Do you know how important a senior year is to any student? This is when you get to have fun while you're still a child, and you don't have as many classes to worry about. You and your friends are supposed to do fun activities and make the best of the time left you have as children, such as making senior jeans and shirts and watching senior sunsets or sunrises. Just have fun. Can you imagine all of us juniors going to a new school where we do not know anyone? We're not going to feel welcomed, and we're not going to be able to feel like we can do those activities. You know, even with losing some of the teachers due to uncertainty that you all have created through this situation, I can't blame them for leaving, as they have their own families to fend for. I can say that there have been days where I have just broke down to some of the teachers in this building, and I'm very thankful that they are still here. Even though there have been changes, the staff still try to make our days better. I still love this school, but because of the thought that we'll not be here next year, it makes us lose motivation. People do not care as much as they used to, me being one of those people. I have seen the spark of those who used to fight hard for this school, me being one of them, lose that spark. I'm scared for college, scared to start my, a new life out on my own, and we should not have to do it twice by moving to a new school. We are all tired. Why won't you leave us alone with this? Does our mental health matter? You know, 99% of teenagers on Friday nights, what are they doing? I bet you it's not sitting in this meeting trying to save our school. They have better things to worry about while they're still kids. Now that I've ranted, here are some of my questions. After three years, not three years, I'm sorry, after three different attempts to close our school for various reasons, can you admit that at the end of the day, what you guys want is to see the doors of this school closed? My second question is, you say your number one priority is the mental well-being and safety of these students, all your students. We are here telling you how we feel, and we are struggling, and especially me. Anyone that knows me in this crowd knows me as a outgoing, loving, poppy person, and you can ask my teachers every day for the past month, they've asked me every day, what's wrong? What's wrong? And I've been dealing stuff, dealing with stuff personally, but this, this has really, really, really got to me. Another question is, how do you guys feel any remorse for what you've put me and my student body through in the past two years of constantly having to worry about this? You know, kids get up in the morning and go to school. They should have to worry about their assignments and, and not worry about, oh my gosh, am I going to be here tomorrow? Is the school going to be here tomorrow? And one final remark is, if you're going to consolidate, please do it the right way. Build a plan, and build either two new schools in Wetzel County or work towards one. Because shoving us all into one school, there's still going to be division, there's still going to be people who think it's going to still be Magnolia, or they're going to say, oh no, I'm still here at Peyton City. Build a new school, and that'll eliminate that. So thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you can answer my questions.
Thank you, Dalton. You and I have spoken many times, and I appreciate you standing up and speaking. The three attempts to close the school are not related in the same way. I think that sometimes you, you don't understand the things that go on behind the scenes when we are working on making sure we have buildings staffed and doing what is right for kids. So there are three individual issues.
I do understand that, but, sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay.
But it's reason after reason after reason. I mean, you just keep coming back with another one.
There are different reasons, but I, I understand what you're saying.
So why? Why is there another reason after another reason after another reason?
We need, we need a change in Wetzel County, and we, at this point, feel that the best option is to move from four schools to two schools, and then continue on to build one Wetzel County school. So we can offer you the best education possible, and we can be financially responsible as a school system.
With you saying that, you know, that's, that's good to want the best for us as students, but why wasn't that the plan when you tried to close the school for EPA violations or air reasons, water reasons? Why was that brought up?
There's two different, very, two very different reasons. One was environmental, and this one is the state of Wetzel County schools. Students are my number one priority, and I know that that's sometimes hard to see, and every student is going to react differently from anything that happens in life, whether it's changing schools, whether it's consolidating, whether it's finishing out your school and not having to consolidate. When you decide to leave and go to college, when you decide as an adult to change jobs, we all have choices, and things do happen in life. And they're not always the exact way that we plan them out to be, and that's just how life works, and it's, it's unfortunate that some kids will be impacted differently. Like, some kids' senior year will be impacted, some kids in our county will get to see a new school because they will never be part of this. But unfortunately, as these kind of situations come up, and we have to talk about consolidation and doing the best thing and being financially responsible, and making sure we have people in front of students, not on video cameras, they're hard decisions for us to make, and this is the time that we're making them.
Now, the mental well-being, what do you guys have to say about all that you've put us through here at Peyton City High School?
Nothing was done on purpose, Dalton. Nobody meant to put anyone through mental anguish. That was not what, I woke up in the morning thinking I'm going to impose mental anguish on the students. I would never do that. Students are my life, I love, I love children, I love teaching. I, probably one of my favorite jobs ever was being a principal in a school building. Not that I don't like this job, however, it is very tough. But that's not something that I woke up ever wanting to do, is cause mental anguish. And I hope that I can put in, in position things that you need. We have worked very hard on our tech center, we have lots of students attending the tech center, we have tried to make individual plans for students as we go along. So we do have counselors, CIS, we are trying our best to help with that. The state has a big initiative because the entire state is going through things. There are lots of schools in the state closing, lots of students are going through things, but just in general, the world is a lot different now, and we have to focus on everyone's mental health, students and staff.
And I understand that, I do, but do you understand, I mean, I, I definitely do not think it was any of your attentions to wake up and say, I'm going to make them have a bad day. But do you understand where I'm coming from when I say that this cloud has been hanging over our heads for two years now? And me, I've listened to my underclassmen cry, I have listened to staff members cry, I've listened to my best friends cry, we're tired, we're beat down because of this situation. So do you understand the mental depressions that you guys have put us through with this situation?
Again, I apologize for any mental anguish that you have gone through. I do try to understand exactly what you're going through. All of us in life have gone through different things that have put us in different situations, and we've had to deal with them. As the adults, we do need to take care of our students, and I promise you, we will take care of your mental health to the best of our ability in the school system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, we address you tonight on the issue of combining schools. I would like to say, a school can be much more than a place of education. A school is a place where you form who you, where, where you form who you want to be. And PCHS and any, any other school in Wetzel County are no different. Our schools are our homes, students and teachers alike. Magnolia and Peyton City High School are the pride of our communities. Members of the board, I know you have many things going through your minds right now, but if you vote to merge or consolidate, you are voting to take away our homes. If you vote for this, I want you to go home and think, I just took away the pride of communities and many people. One must realize that schools and students are more than just numbers. We are living, breathing people just like you with our strengths and our flaws. I ask any school official tonight to ask yourself, are you really working for us and our education, or are you working for charts and statistics? I recognize that the last few years have been turbulent, but by letting the schools have their own individuality, will help bring stability back to this county. And the uncertainty of the consolidation issue have driven many students and teachers to transfer away from Wetzel County and to stop fighting, will bring those numbers back up. Thank you for listening.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Ms. Porter, Wetzel County Board of Education, and the members of our community. Thank you for giving us, as students, the opportunity to explain how the future plan to close our school impacts us more, impacts more than just our education. My name is London Alexander, and I'm a freshman here at Peyton City. I was originally homeschooled, but was given the opportunity to cheer for Peyton City when I was in the eighth grade. By second semester, I had finally convinced my parents enough to send me to public school. Since I was already cheering for Peyton City, this is where my parents chose to enroll me. While they were filling out the paperwork, former Principal Ship was talking with my parents, and also Ms. Fritzman had said that if people didn't know that I had been homeschooled, they would have thought that I'd grown up going to Peyton City schools my entire life. This is what makes Peyton City so special. Yes, just like any school, we have friends that are closer than others, but when I came here, or when any other new student comes here, the whole school goes out of their way just to accept us. I think I speak for the whole student body and staff when I say this is not just a school building to us. This is our home filled with our family, and as I've recently experienced, this family doesn't even stop at these doors. Even the alumni recognizes us when we're out and will go out of their way to ask us how we're doing. So before the decision is made to close down our school, I would like to ask you the following four questions. My first question is, if the merger is meant to benefit the students, what programs will you provide? Will this happen immediately, or will we still be waiting while this new school is built? My next question is, how will the board be sure to preserve our traditions such as Orange and Out Day in honor of Logan Fleury, or the Boat Regarda in honor of Matt Barker? Another question I have is, how do you plan to keep the family culture that exists at PCHS incorporated with this merger? And my final question is, if renovation and maintenance was an issue considered to consolidate, then why was the maintenance not kept up and budgeted for?
Again, thank you for standing up, you're very brave. Programming that will be provided will be immediate. We will not wait on programming. We have, plan to have in place all of the courses that you need with live teachers at both of our consolidated schools starting next fall. Honor tradition, we never want to take away your tradition. You have a very strong alumni association this, in this town, as do many other towns across the United States that keep that tradition alive. That will never go away. There will always be a Payton City tradition, just as many other schools that have consolidated keep that tradition. How do you honor the traditions that you have? You get to honor those by working together with new students and then you get to build new traditions. So a lot of your traditions that you would take with you to a new school, they would have traditions and then you would decide which ones that you needed to keep and which ones were important and you'd work together as student leaders to do that. Family culture is very important. It's very hard for us in the high school level to do family cultures. Family engagement though is a big topic in the state of West Virginia, is probably the entire nation because we want our families to be involved. We want our families in Wetzel County to stay involved with our students no matter what school they attend. As far as the maintenance and upkeep, probably some of that, you know, we do, we do what we can and we update what we need to update and sometimes you don't update it until it's too late and I don't really have a solid answer for you on updating the facilities in the timely manner. Our facilities are currently open, yes, the state does see that we could update some of our facilities even more and I think that's part of this whole process, that if we are updating two facilities versus four facilities and that's going to push us faster to our goal of building one brand new school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I have this name pronounced right. Kayan Hunt?
Good evening Superintendent Porter and Wetzel County Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. What brings me to speak tonight is the emotional roller coaster that my fellow classmates and I have endured for the past two years. My name is Kayan Hunt and I'm a junior at Payton City High School. By the time of the school closure, I will be starting my senior year and cannot imagine completely restarting for my last year of high school and then restarting again for my first year of college. In seventh grade, I transferred to PCHS from a school where I was treated unfairly for various reasons and can wholeheartedly say I had never felt so welcomed by a group of people as I did at Payton City High School. A few years after I moved, I was going through what I would consider to be the hardest time of my life and nobody was there for me like the staff members of PCHS, some of which no longer work in the county due to the unstable workplace and not knowing if they would continue, they would continue to have a job. Since the beginning of my sophomore year, the thought of where we would go to school has loomed over our heads. It had cast a shadow on activities that we should enjoy and remember as being the best time of our lives, but will now remember as an extremely stressful and hurtful part of it. The uncertainty of our school has affected all of us in great measures. One of my closest friends is no longer himself due to the toll this has taken on him and everybody else. I am not completely opposed to consolidation, however, I want it to be fair to all students involved. I feel that the student body, staff and community of Payton City has been left in the dark throughout this entire process. We have not been included in much of what the other students have been. It isn't fair to us. I think collectively as a group, we want consolidation, but do not want to be shoved into Magnolia. We want one move, one school, for all students on new land with new colors and a new name. I want to graduate with my peers wearing green and white and want to see consolidation in the future, but the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tonight we're meeting to discuss the plan for closing Payton City High School by next school year. And it's been my understanding all along that the discussion is about merging us into Magnolia instead of what you're referring to as a consolidation. I think it's just a misnomer to call what you're doing a consolidation when in fact a consolidation was usually considering the entirety of the county schools. My daughter went through that her junior year in Spencer and our school system handled things entirely different, differently than you all have in that they were informed from their sophomore year on at Spencer High School that the two schools would be consolidated. And the plans were made to purchase land, build the school and the students, staff and even I as a band booster president was kept up with all the information regarding the progress of those plans. By my daughter's junior year in high school, she was told this would be her last year. And yes, there were tears and yes, there was an awful lot of emotional stuff going on. But the way that the school board and the superintendent handled that situation so beautifully was to include the students in a plan for what was gonna happen at their new consolidated school by talking with them about forming a committee of students from both schools to discuss school colors, mascots, school song, all the things that we remember from our high schools doing. You know, we, we are proud still here at Payton City High School to sing our school song. And as a result of those plans that were thought out carefully, presented, her experience was far different than what I see these kids experiencing. I moved back to Payton City thirty years ago after going through a turbulent time in my personal life. When I returned to Payton City, I became withdrawn and had a difficult time being out in public because of shame about my weight and other things that were going on in my personal life. I was suffering from anxiety and depression and as a trained social worker, I wasn't able to help myself heal. But the healing process really began for me when a high school student, former classmate of mine, met me and said, Patty, how come you haven't been attending the alumni banquets and meetings, reunions? And I said, Mike, because I'm ashamed of how I work, I'm ashamed of how I feel about myself and I don't want anyone to see me like this because I was the co-salutatorian in my class. And I went on to college and got a degree in social work, but my life crumbled out of control, out of my control. And I didn't even recognize myself after the end of basically my thirty-ninth year before I returned here to live with my parents at that age. And what I see these kids experiencing here and now is what I liken to the effects of a divorce. You can't see if you've never experienced a divorce, the effects of what it has on the adults, the children, the grandparents, everyone, but everyone has a piece of the pain that's caused. And when I see what's going on with this talk of merger, the things that I relate between divorce and this merger is the fact that each side has hired an attorney. Each side has their own viewpoint about what's going on and what's the best thing for the child, for the students. All the while, we haven't really talked to the students and heard from them about how their hearts are feeling and dealing with this. And divorce for children is more than just the physical separation of the adults. They often have to choose sides, they have to decide if they're gonna live with mom or dad. And now the kids are faced with deciding not to stay in their own home, Payton City High School, but having to go to an entirely different town and school and facing the unknown future. There's anxiety, there's depression, there's a lack of interest in normal activities and sometimes just the plain, I wanna forget about things and bury my head. And I know a lot of students have expressed to me that they don't even really have a desire to study anymore or to go forward. My last comment to you is this, you can do something about this tonight. In the name of God, do your duty, school board members. In the name of God, do your duty for these children. Give them future and a hope again and don't take away the things that mean so much to them because in the long run, it is not gonna be successful. I don't care how much you plan, God has bigger plans. God has bigger plans than what you all plan and he can put an angel in front of every one of you and even me tonight to show you that you can't keep going forward on this. This should be the end of this tonight.
Thank you for sharing with us. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. It is seven twenty-one, we'll be back in here at seven twenty-six to start.
One of our two community schools in Payton City. And as you can see, we have a great support here, supporting Wetzel County schools. I do have questions. My first question is, what is the result of vapor intrusion sampling taken at Magnolia High School? My second one is, has radiation testing taken place at Magnolia High School? My third one is, how are vulnerabilities of physical risk to students, teachers and citizens identified to keep them from physical harm? The fourth is, what is the mitigation plan to hold back a derailed railcar when it might hit the gymnasium wall? You see, on June twenty-fifth, I made a delegation presentation on chemical and physical exposures to the students and employee, and employees of Payton City, that Payton City High School might be exposed to when moving to Magnolia High School. I stated that there was a risk of creosote vapor intrusions at the school because over a hundred years, the railroad ties had been located near the school. Since that time, I have found that a public health assessment was conducted at Viking Glass Company less than a half a mile from the high school. The following are some of the chemicals found abandoned in the groundwater and the subsurface soil. Arsenic, lead, Arsenic, lead, mercury, candium, hydrofluoric acid, hydrosulfuric acid, xylene, and other petroleum distillates, as well as radioactive materials, uranium-238, thorium-232, and potassium-40 isotopes were present at the site. I then discussed the location of the railroad being 28-foot from the building. And if there was a railcar derailment, and probability of the car hitting the building was very great. On July 21st, just less than a week later, after my presentation, a derailment in Virginia of five CSX freight cars hit a wall, causing the wall to collapse over on top of four garages and crushed them all. On July, the next day, on July 22nd, a CSX train jumps tracks and crashes into a garage in Niagara Falls. At the Magnolia High School, the railroad is 28-foot from the wall of the gymnasium, which is a supporting wall for that building. If the train comes off and hits that wall, and the wall finds, falls down, the probability of the roof falling in is great. It's a supporting wall for that roof. At the end of my presentation, I stated that Peyton City High School students should not be moved into Magnolia High School until these findings were corrected. I also made a statement that I was aware that the board was not allowed to make any statements to the delegations. But as a citizen, I deserve an answer, and I said that to each one of you. I then gave you a paper with the information on it that I'd like to have answered, and I received no answer. I received no answer. So after two months, I asked the board president, why have I received no answer? And my, and the reply was, we're not allowed to do answers in written form, but the superintendent is supposed to, and I'll talk to her the next day. Well, now it's six months later, and not, not one board member or the superintendent has responded to my request. My demand for a response must be viewed as not very important, wouldn't happen to us, we don't need to know that information. Interesting, isn't it? What kind of example is that, where you never answer people who come month after month talking to you, and there's no response? You're not allowed--
You used your time up.
What is the result of vapor intrusion sampling you meant at Magnolia? Is that what your question was?
My time--
It just beeped.
Is that five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. That was fast. Sorry. Okay.
What is the result--
My first question is, what is the result of vapor intrusion sampling taken at Magnolia High School?
We did not do vapor intrusion sampling at Magnolia High School. We did not do radiation sampling at Magnolia High School. The vulnerabilities of teachers and students from physical harm, we take that into consideration every single day when we send our teachers and students to school. How are we going to hold back a derailed car in case the, it hits a school wall? We're not. It's going to hit the wall. Um, it's, we're here to talk about--
So you know that.
--the consolidation of these two schools. I don't have answers for you on that, but thank you.
That is very risky. No mediation, no, nothing redundancy to stop that. And you're going to allow more students in that building. But, you know it.
The next speaker is Mayor Hockstrasser? I'm not sure how to pronounce it.
Paul Sattler.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I want to say is, these students are amazing that's talked here. They really are. High schools are the center of your community and the anchor of your city. When cities lose a school, it hurts property values and tax revenues. Schools are where young people first learn how to interact with their communities in official and personal capacities. They offer stability, routine, and community. Public schools are gathering places. Schools shuttered can become breeding grounds for crime. They become eyesores in the community. The vacant school still needs to be maintained and insured, which can be costly. Do you have any idea what the city is gonna lose in revenue, um, as far as, um, our tax base, um, property values, anything like that? From what we were looking at, the city stands to lose about $18,000 to $20,000 in revenue in water and sewer. Property values, um, studies have said you'll lose 6% to 10%, but if that's the case, we're losing 15,000 to 24,000 in revenue, uh, to a total of about 44,000 a year. That's gonna be hard for the small community like this to replace. Residents move out of town wanting to move closer so their children are not bused. They choose other schools because they don't like the welcoming school that has been chosen for them. Studies have been done stating that academic scores of the displaced students often went south, and it also could have a negative effect on the new peers at the receiving school academically. There will need to be more support given to these welcoming schools, to these welcoming schools to help build school culture and deal with the emotional effects on the student body. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney McWilliams?
Good evening. As has been stated multiple times already this evening, there seems to be a myriad of reasons over the past 15 months for the ultimate closure of Peyton City High School and now the closure of Hundred High School. But one thing I wanted to focus in on was, I believe there was a work session held just in the past two or three months where the bulk of the conversation surrounded the summer test assessments and the county's performance on these, what we used to call standardized tests. And the results weren't what we would all like them to be. But in relation to that, it seems to have been stated, well, it doesn't say it was stated, by administration and also by some supporters in, in another community in support of consolidation that one reason why our test scores are low is because we don't have enough certified teachers in the classrooms. By consolidating, we can ensure more certified teachers in the classrooms, thereby increasing our test scores. I want to premise this with saying that we're putting a lot of faith in a test as a barometer. Uh, and in the past, when these tests came back low, the normal, uh, operating standard was to remediate, was to help the school that was floundering, not close it. But anyway, so what, I looked into all 55 counties in West Virginia, and as far as counties that are consolidated or partially consolidated, about 80% of West Virginia has some form of consolidation at the secondary level. 12 counties, about 22% of West Virginia counties are unconsolidated. And I count Wetzel County as unconsolidated, even though Valley High School was a long-term consolidation. So what I looked at was the percentage of certified teachers in each county. And first, I do have a couple of questions that I'll, I'll throw them. Do you know what the current percentage of certified teachers in Wetzel County is, and do you know what the state average is? And without giving you the answer, I'll let you know that we're not at the state average, but we're not too far off. And what I found out was, in the top four counties, and I looked at counties above the state average, because that's, would be our goal. And the top four counties that are above, well above the state average, two of them are non-consolidated. Wood County at 100% and Montangalia County at 96%. So, and I kept on looking, kept on looking, kept on thinking. And instead of the 22% that you would think would be represented, because 22% is 12 out of 55, roughly, um, the percentage of counties that are non-consolidated is higher than the 22%. So we actually carry a higher certification level in non-consolidated counties than you would expect. So I don't think consolidation actually solves a problem of certification. We all know how you get a percentage up. I mean, it's simple math. You either increase your numerator, or you decrease your denominator. So two solutions I like to offer is, can we incentivize the staff in our county to become certified, which would increase the numerator, right? So that makes the percentage higher. The other option is, you decrease the denominator, which means you fire uncertified teachers. Maybe that's the goal. Secondly, I look at test scores by county. And in high school, it's reading, English Language Arts, Science, and Math. And in math, the percentages do follow. About 22% of the top 12 counties in West Virginia are non-consolidated counties. And that carries the same rate as consolidated versus non-consolidated in, in the population. However, in science and in reading, non-consolidated counties outperform what you would expect. There are roughly about 40% of the top 12 counties in West Virginia are non-consolidated. So that tells me the correlation between consolidation doesn't actually follow, the test scores don't actually follow consolidation. Now, I understand the hypothesis is, if you have fewer schools, higher certification of the teachers, they should be teaching, uh, different curricula or what have you, and the test score should come out higher. That's a nice hypothesis, and I'm trying to help prove it out. And what I was finding was, it didn't prove. So I talked to our friends in Brook County, a consolidated county for over 50 years, whose test scores were about that of Wetzel County. And they basically said that, in their assessment, um, the test score was, the test is a bad barometer, is not a good gauge of accomplishment. The, the faculty in, in Brook County actually looked at the test and realized that the test, which is the SAT test, uh, doesn't really follow the curriculum. Uh, so that is an internal fix. That doesn't include closing a school because God knows, Brook County can't close any more schools, they're already consolidated. The other issue was, uh, this, the seriousness with which the students attempt the test. And they interviewed these students. They, and I won't say they interviewed 100% of them, but the gentleman told me they interviewed several students, and they said, there's no accountability, there's no incentive, there's no reason for us to do well on these tests, which is sad, but true. So how do we incentivize the students to, one, allow them to take hold of these tests so that if we are gonna use a test score, which again, I say is not a valid barometer, but is one that seems to be accepted, if we are gonna use a test score, I know, uh, how do we ensure, he's gonna gavel me, that we give them a reason to take the test seriously so that they do-- Thank you.
I was trying to let you get to the end of--
I know, I, I run on. So my questions were, do you know what the percentage of certified teachers at present are in Wetzel County? And do you understand what the state average is for that?
So I don't think I can give you a percentage, but I do know our numbers. We talked about that earlier, about folks that we have unfilled positions. So an unfilled position, of course, is a substitute, and there's nothing wrong with substitutes. And, you know, sometimes our positions are filled with folks in, um, alternative certification programs, which is not a bad thing. We have some wonderful folks who went through alternative certification and become teachers. And we do work with, I'm pretty lucky to work with, uh, three universities so far, with a couple of teachers and residents and some alternative certification folks, and, you know--
Okay, so the answer is, you don't know the percentage?
I don't know the percentage. I know we have around 10.
That's fine. I'm sorry?
It's around 10, folks, though.
Okay, the percentage of certified teachers in Wetzel County, according to the West Virginia Department of Education, is, I just lost it, I'm sorry, I had it right in front of me, 80, 86.12%. Uh, the state average for certification at the secondary level is about 87%. So we're not far off the state average. So I don't, again, the test scores that we want to correlate with certification of the teachers doesn't seem to follow because our test scores are not at the state average. However--
Will you take--
--counties like Wood County, who are 100% certified, and this, this proves your point, I'm actually gonna give you a point here. Wood County has 100% certification, so they claim. And Williamstown High School was in the top 10 in both science and, and math. So there, there are areas where it does correlate, but they were anomalies.
Mr. McWilliams, um, do you have any other questions that were already asked that you can answer?
Well, I'm gonna do a follow-up with you. Maybe a leap of faith with me here, but I think you'll follow me. Um, you know, when we don't have positions, when we have unfilled positions every day that we start out with, we start out lacking substitutes. And our teachers who are certified and who work hard every day, and our principals who come to work every day, find themselves in tough positions sometimes covering classes. And, um, you know, and it's one thing to cover a class here and there, but when you start having things happen all the time, then, you know, what you had planned for the day doesn't happen, and that does, that does bear on things. I think that's important--
So to follow up, then, the, the higher level of certi, the higher percentage of certified teachers would necessarily correlate to higher test score, because you said they have to just, they have to juggle their schedules anyway.
Well, and so part of our problem is our vacancies, yes. But that also means we don't have certified, you see the leap here?
Yeah, I, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Young?
Okay, I've spoke to you guys before, so you know who I am. I'm Lisa Young. I have two, um, grandkids that go to this school that I have custody of. First, I have a few questions. The impact statements that Magnolia presents, a better long-term option, please define long-term in how that plays under the planning to build a new, single, more centrally-located consolidated school out in the county. My second question is, can you tell us how the results of the Thrasher survey were interrogated into the planning to close Peyton City High School and Hundred? My third one, um, some results from the Thrasher survey that we all seen and looked at showed that two communities were more adverse to consolidation than the other two. The two that did not want consolidation were Hundred and Peyton City. The two areas that were more willing to consolidate are New Martinsville and Valley-Pine Grove area, according to the survey. It appears the two communities that do not embrace consolidation are being punished for voicing their viewpoints by closing their schools, and the other two communities are being rewarded by keeping the schools in their representative communities. Also, my other question would be, or statement is, the court ordered that all, when we was all in court, it was ordered that everything was to be returned to normal, and that, um, you went and made suggestions that no county teams play on our field. How does this show your idea of unity? And then, while I was sitting up there, another one, Mr. McPherson was talking, um, you're talking about subs. Are these subs that have been offered positions, or are they just subs because they want to Also, um, another statement is, speaking to several students, um, are you aware that there's many students that are not planning to follow your plan, that are planning to go different directions to other schools, that are planning to quit school, that are planning to homeschool? And I, for one, have one that'll be a senior next year. When I talk to him now, you know what he says? Get me in a building, get me out. I'm done fighting them. This is ridiculous. I don't even want to be in the building. What's that to look forward to for a senior year? I mean, seriously, think back to your senior year. You have memories, right? Your junior year, you have memories. Look at what these-- Look at what these kids have. 20 years from now, when somebody pops up and says, what'd you do your junior year? We fought to keep our school open. Why? Why are we fighting? Look to your left, look at those kids sitting there. Almost a complete fool thing where it was a little bit ago. Do you think them kids want to be sitting there on a Friday night when they could be hanging with their friends? When they could be somewhere else? But they're sitting there because that shows where these kids want to be. They want to be in this building. They want this to be their school. Why did the kids have to be moved? If this has to be a consolidation, why can it not be one-time consolidation into a new school? Why do these kids have to be uplifted, taken to another school, then uplifted again for some of them possibly, and put into another school? It might not be the juniors, the sophomores. It might not be none of them that see that. But you're talking about taking the 7th and 8th graders to New Martinsville? It might be them. So, there, you have them going from this school, going to another school, and then going to another school. Why? Why do you not do one move if you want to do it? Why keep the one?
Thank you.
Number one, the court order does not play into this meeting. As far as substitute teachers go, any substitute teacher that is applying for a job and is certified and bids on that job does have a chance for that job. Families in schools, families do have school choice nowadays in the state of West Virginia. You can take your child to any public school that you wish, as long as you can provide transportation.
So, you're willing to lose students by doing a plan of merging into a school and then merge, or consolidating, let me rephrase that, and then consolidating possibly again? You're willing to lose students over that?
So, the, just so you know, I'm going to circle back just a little bit, the long-term plan is approximately five years. Do I want to lose any students? No. Do we already lose students? Yes. Have we already lost students for years? Yes.
And you've gained several students also.
Excuse me, excuse me. Families do have a choice. We don't want to lose them, no. We want to create the best opportunities for them.
Right, but do you realize how many students you have gained also from other communities? Because they want to be here, because they feel safe here? Do you realize that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Johnson?
Really can't believe you people gave me a microphone this time. The issues I am having is that, you know, you say that this is going to be a better education for our kids, but there's absolutely no change in any curriculum. None whatsoever. It is like problem after problem after problem. It's like taking gunfire. First, it's the plume. Then, the kids are in imminent danger. Then, it's a teacher shortage. Now, you're talking about funding. What is it? What is the reason? There should only be one reason, and it should only be one real reason. Because when you come up with multiple reasons as to why you're going to close a school, it seems pretty fictitious. Pretty fictitious to me. Y'all want to send our kids to a school with kids that they don't get along with. There isn't a person in this room that started a Facebook group called Let's Make New Martinsville Great Again? That puts up memes that they think are funny and take digs at our cheerleaders. That is absolutely wrong. That is the kind of turmoil that has been caused throughout these communities. My son goes to Mothai. There is, have you done the math on how long these kids are going to be on a bus a day and how many miles they'll travel? My son would get on a bus and go to Magnolia High School, to get on a bus, to go back to St. Mary's, to get on a bus, go back to New Martinsville School, to get on a bus, come back to Peyton City. That is 72.4 miles a day. Every child that goes to Mothai from Peyton City, 72.4 miles a day. Almost two hours of absolutely nothing but sitting on a bus. Tapping on his phone, taking a nap, or doing whatever kids do on a bus these days. How is that a better education? Would you want your kids on a bus for 72.4 miles, five days a week? That's a lot, and that's not even the kids out in Hundred that are going, going over Barker, stop after stop. I do have a question. In a board meeting a couple months ago, Hundred pled their case for why they felt Valley should be pushed into their school. And as far as I'm concerned, they had a really good case. They're not understaffed. Their teachers will not go to Valley. Why wasn't that taken into consideration when you have the sewage backing up at Valley? You have the water issue that they have out at Valley. Is it because sooner or later you plan on just pushing Valley and Hundred into Magnolia the way you're pushing Peyton City? Is the one school for all actually going to be Magnolia Blue Eagles? Is that what the real goal is here? Because you do know, that's what everybody thinks. That's what everybody thinks. It makes no sense as to why you would push Hundred's kids into a dilapidated school with a sewage backing up and no water. And people can't help but feel the reason is, is so you can use it later to push them into Magnolia. So, is that your real goal, Ms. Porter? That's what we all want to know.
And Mrs. Johnson, I believe I've answered that this evening.
They didn't hear it, if you did. Is your real plan to push everybody into Magnolia Blue Eagles?
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Calm down.
Sir, you need to stop or you'll have to leave.
Would you like me to answer? Would you like me to answer now or you want me to wait? Either way is fine.
I'd like an answer.
The answer is, today, I drove out and looked at property. So, my plan is not to move everybody to Magnolia. That is not my plan. That is not the plan that I intend to present to the board when the time comes.
Why wasn't taken in consideration to push Valley into Hundred, since the building's better?
This meeting is not about Valley and Hundred. Thank you.
This is about Wetzel County schools.
You've had your five minutes, and she's answered your questions. You only need to sit down. Ma'am? The questions, she looked, ma'am. If you're going to continue, you'll have to leave.
I will leave, but I'm telling you this, this is wrong because she.
When you ask her questions, all the questions are done ahead of time. She answered.
Rebranding of this new school will be paramount to the success of this new consolidated school if approved by this board and the State Board of Education. Has this new school's mission statement been drafted yet? If so, how does it vary from the current mission statements for both Magnolia and Peyton City High School? Is there a committee already made up that is working on the rebranding and new recommendations for the new school colors, uniforms, names, et cetera? Considering times of the essence of this matter, and if there is no such committee, then what is the timeline for rebranding? Shouldn't current students that are affected by this move be involved in this process? If not, the students, who will be involved in this rebranding process? And it's my understanding no one section of this impact statement can be removed. Is that correct? As an example, you cannot say to remove the section that deals with retaining all of the current staff at all the schools. This has to be accepted as a whole, correct? What caused the lack of staff specifically at Peyton City High School? And how is it really fiscally responsible to make two moves if all of these upgrades have to be done at the other schools? That's all my questions.
Okay, no, the new mission statement is not drafted. Our mission is still to educate our students. This is a post-consolidation decision. There is no committee already made up. That, I know that that's out there, that is false. I do speak with students every nine weeks at each of the high schools. We have superintendent's councils. And yes, we have spoken about what would happen if we consolidate, but there is no set committee. The students would love to be involved in this, as they should. They should 100% be able to give their choice of what this will look like when we rebrand. It would be their school, so they would need to have that choice. I'm 100% behind that. As far as no one section can be removed in the impact statement and moving staff, we do plan to have jobs for all of our staff. So, I'm not sure if I misunderstood that question, but we do plan to remain, retain all of our staff.
Including coaches?
Including coaches. Lack of staff at PCHS, there are varying reasons. We did not have meetings with every person that has decided to leave. Some of them have. We've had some face-to-face. Nothing specific, but that probably is a good idea going forward. Physically responsible with the upgrades. The upgrades in the impact statement are things that the state of West Virginia has said that they believe we should do. Do we have to do all of those? No. Do we need to be fiscally responsible when we do the updates? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name's Amanda Anderson. Graduated from Peyton City High School. I've got a junior, I've got a 7th grader. With the majority of concern seems around the high schools 9th through 12th. I want to focus on the future of Peyton City 7th and 8th grade students. This proposal approved by Wetzel County Board of Education and then approved by the Wetzel County, Wetzel, West Virginia State Board of Education, would see the 7th and 8th grade students from Peyton City being bused 10 miles or more to the New Martinsville School in the Stilton Section in New Martinsville, where a perfectly good facility sits at north end of Peyton City, which could easily house those 50 to 60 kids. When PCES building was opened in 1977, it housed 1st through 5th grades, and each grade had three classrooms, 15 classrooms total, along with a separate music room, special ed rooms, and it still had extra rooms left over. I don't see why this facility should be ignored when it comes to housing Peyton City 7th and 8th grade students. First, there's ample time to make any accommodations need to fit these students into the building. First question, what is the current facility utilization rate for PCES? Secondly, and maybe one of the most important reasons is this, Long Drain is a K-8 facility, Shoreline is a K-8 facility, New Martinsville School is a K-8 facility, and actually, all are mostly pre-K-8 facilities. So, why would Peyton City Elementary not also be made a K-8 facility? Question, do you not think it would be fair and equitable to have each attendance area served by a K-8 facility? Especially when one of them is already located in town, it would not require any additional busing? Do you think it's the wisest move to bus an additional 50 to 60 kids over 10 miles when they contend school in their own town? I need to point out that the impact statement states that there'll be no additional busing cost to transport Peyton City 7th and 8th graders to New Martinsville. How is that possible? Will they be dropped off at Magnolia, where the additional transportation costs do increase, and then walk to New Martinsville Schools? Any costs associated with getting students all the way to New Martinsville must be calculated or allocated to those students going up Route 2 to the Martinsville School for the reason the impact statement should be deemed misleading. By keeping PCES a K-8 facility, the junior high activities could be offered in Peyton City. Is that not fair, equitable? The other tenants' areas would be able to retain their identities, but Peyton City would be forced to give up their extracurricular activities such as sports and clubs. Peyton City has a unique opportunity to offer a wonderful junior high band and music program, a program the Towns High School is renowned for. Why would you take this away? Peyton City needs to maintain its identity in some fashion, and making PCES a K-8 school and keeping our students in town through 8th grade is the perfect way to do this and maintain fairness and equality among the county's four tenants' areas. Last summer, when emergency closing was proposed, the reasoning behind moving PC students to New Martinsville Schools was because there wasn't enough time to make accommodation needed. Well, that's not the case for this proposal. If approved by both the board county and the state boards of education in the upcoming months, there's plenty of time to make the facility ready for Peyton City 7th and 8th grade students to stay in Peyton City, attend PCES, maintain its junior high activities, and keep our identity. We have a new gymnasium, a nice gymnasium, for these activities, and with football at the high school would be used for any sporting events associated with PCES K-8 school. We don't see any legitimate reason why this should not happen. Therefore, the impact statement needs to be rewritten to remove the reference of moving Peyton City High School 7th and 8th grader students currently attending Peyton City High School would be moved to Peyton City Elementary. Thank you.
Pam Witschey?
I'm going to answer those questions. She has some questions. Yeah, she had questions. They deserve answers, and I can answer them.
Since she walked away, he hasn't answered one of your questions.
You can stay up here for your answers if you want. You can if you'd like. So, I understand where you're coming from, and I can't say that we didn't think about that, okay? So, please know that that was considered. I can tell you that within the past two weeks, we've struggled at Peyton's Elementary School because it looks like we're going to have a couple extra students in one grade come in, and we're going to have to separate into two classrooms. And we currently don't know what room we're going to use for that. So, that's a problem. And of course, I also took the time to look at certifications of folks. Now, of course, you know, we could, you know, move some other folks around, but when you look at, you know, what 7th and 8th graders would get, certification-wise, it can be, there's a few people out there who are unicorns who have multiple certifications, and sometimes you can double duty. But there's, when I look at the certifications of the folks who are there, who, you know, maybe, maybe could help out with that, but, you know, they don't, if they've been into a job, that there's a 4th grade teacher, it doesn't really matter if they have a K-8 certification, they're a 4th grade teacher, and they'd have to, want to take that job. But there's just, the staffing wouldn't work out quite so well there. But when we look at New Martinsville School and numbers, you know, as far as if, if we move those students up there, currently in 7th grade at New Martinsville School, they average about 14 kids a section, a class period in 7th grade, and about 13 kids a section in 8th grade, in core level, core areas. And if all the students, 7th, 8th graders this year, we use numbers from this year, that average goes up to about 18 and 17. So, our class sizes still say, there's probably some elementary school teachers who have 25 kids in their room who would love to have 17. So, we did, we did consider it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Pam Witschey?
Tonight, related to our present situation that we're dealing with, with the education of youth in Wetzel County, I want to take you on a little journey in history. We're told that if you don't learn from history, you're apt to repeat it. In the mid-'70s, Wetzel County opened the Wetzel County Career Center. It was opened only after several years of planning, property purchased, architecture Property purchased, architects hired, buildings planned. You get my gist. It was a long process. Not a two-week scare tactic. Not a six-month throw together. Not even a year of fear. It was a long process, of which we are not seeing presently. The finished product, Wetzel County Career Center, was successful for several years. However, after some time, and after all the work that went into this successful endeavor, a new superintendent was hired. She had an agenda. And vocational education was not a part of that agenda. Her agenda focused on math and science programs. So instead of looking at the programs at the Career Center, reevaluating those programs, finding the problems, shoring them up, and making the program strong again, she began dispersing those programs all over the county to various high schools, and those that she didn't want, she got rid of. She took the Wetzel County Career Center and turned it into the Wetzel County Technology Center. The consideration of students not focusing on math and science in their futures was nil. The needs of so many of Wetzel County's students were ignored and neglected. Does that sound familiar? This idea of a technology center became a reality based on the agenda of a few, and not on a long-term plan. After a few years, that agenda failed. Wetzel County then had no vocational center and no technology center. Our county was viewed as the anti-vocational education county. The needs of students were overlooked, and the needs of the vocational trades, vocational trades in our area. Thus, the needs of our communities were ignored. Again, does that sound familiar? These needs were ignored in the pursuit of an agenda. Today, you are all trying to put back together a vocational program for Wetzel County in the same building that's set fallow for several years, closed due to the selfish agenda of a few people. You were not, you were not a part of that mistake. You were not among those who destroyed an important part of Wetzel County's vocational education opportunities for our children. And here we are, 20 years later, you're trying to put things back together. So keep in mind, our decisions, your decisions, have lasting effects. We have small schools, an option that's been chosen by Wetzel County citizens many times over the past years. We see our schools faltering in some ways. Why don't we reevaluate our individual schools? Shore them up. Make them strong again. We can't do that with the chaos that we've seen over the last several months. You're sitting on the opportunity of a lifetime. We don't have to be like everyone else. We don't have to destroy what we have to fulfill the agenda of a few. You are a county that is financially self-sufficient. We have the funds to do miracles in our schools. I have my doubts that any of you will be in the seats that you're sitting in when this endeavor comes to fruition. And by its fruition or completion, I mean the merging of four schools into three, and then eventually into one consolidated school, as you say you're going to do. And no offense, Mrs. Porter, but I don't think that your long-term agenda is to be superintendent of Wetzel County for a lifetime. I doubt that you will even be here to see that project to its end. What does that mean? That means that the chaos we're seeing right now will have to be addressed by others, people who weren't even involved in this agenda from the onset. If you succeed in your endeavor, more than likely, just as you're trying to rectify the lack of vocational education in Wetzel County due to someone else's lack of foresight years ago, someone else, years from now, will be trying to rectify the fallacy of what you're doing now. I urge you, if you truly want consolidation in Wetzel County, do it the right way. Let the dust settle from all this chaos. Regain the trust and the respect of your citizens, teachers, and students throughout Wetzel County, which has been lost. Do it the right way. Take your time. Do it right. And remember, consolidation may not even be the best plan for Wetzel County and the needs of its communities. You know, and I know, because it's been made public, that much of this process has been based on lies, deceit, and mistrust. Would you want to go into a marriage based on lies, deceit, and mistrust? Of course you wouldn't. You would say such a marriage wouldn't work. Well, that's what you're trying to do. Marry or unite four schools based on lies, deceit, and mistrust with one party, your schools even resisting the unification. It won't work. You have to restart the process being truthful, trustworthy, and open. If you open your eyes, you can see that you're already started down the road to failure. You can actually see the similarities of this failure. You've lost students, you're going to lose more. You've lost teachers, you're going to lose more. You've marred the reputation of Wetzel County's successful history of education. You've lost the trust of the people. You've lost the sense of security that the people of Wetzel County had in their schools. And you've lost that sense of duty that the people of Wetzel County once felt when they went to the polls to cast their votes for school levies.
Your time has been up. Kelly Stein.
I'm gonna have a hard time following that. A lot of this stuff I've had to scratch out because people have already hit on this stuff, but... When you get to work out in the public, you get to speak to a lot of people. And I've heard so many things about this situation. And just yesterday, a guy from New Martinsville came up to me, and he said, "You know, if Magnolia had turf and air conditioning, your meeting wouldn't be happening." What he meant was, this is basically all because Magnolia wants turf, and they want air conditioning in their gym. I've got four questions. I know no one's asked this first one. We put a work order in over a year ago to have those pennants fixed. When can those pennants be fixed? Number two, why are you having enhancements and athletic upgrades to Magnolia High School when you're going to build a new school? Number three, what upgrades are you referring to? Number four, when all four current schools are empty, what are you going to do with the school buildings? Number five, why are you having a board meeting on the final vote on this at 9:00 AM on a school day when nobody can attend, and two of these board members work daytime? Number six, I was recently told about Morris Farms up on top of 180. It's 64 acres. That's where the kids have prom. The owners of that told me to my face, "It's for sale." And I told them to call the board office. Morris Farms is actually located in New Martinsville. It's got a 26155 address. And my last question is, John kind of already asked it, but there's several coaches here in this gym tonight. Are we going up here? Are we gonna, are we gonna be told, "Forget it? We don't need you"? Or are we gonna be able to go to New Martinsville? Thank you.
We'll check, maintenance director just walked out for a phone call. I'll check on that.
Pretty easy fix.
I don't disagree. If you read the impact statement, you'll see that we will do, if we end up with two empty schools out of this one, our options would be to sell or donate to a community. I've seen, my personal elementary school was closed into consolidation and became a community center. So that's, that's one of the options you have there. And then, I think we've already stated, and it's in the impact statement, so, you know, we want to keep everybody around. Does that mean we might have a few extra folks? It probably does. But it would be nice to go to work every morning and have a few extra folks, instead of wondering if we have enough.
Some of the enhancements that would have to be done would be because for the next five years, we still will have students in our buildings and doing athletics. So, we know that we will have to do some enhancements so that we can serve our students now, knowing that we'll also be looking forward to building that new complex.
So, are you talking about, what, you know, Magnolia's got a really nice gym. I can't imagine what else could be done with that gym. The football field's beautiful.
Well, I know one big thing that we've talked about now, since I've gotten here, is the track at Magnolia. I know that Payton City High School currently comes up and uses the track, and Magnolia uses that track, and that track is in disrepair and needs some definite attention. And Mr. Doty and I have talked about that, and we hope to have that done by the spring for our students.
If I'm not mistaken, I don't think you guys own the track. The track's owned by the city of New Martinsville. That's not right? Okay, my bad.
Thank you.
And the vote? Why are you having a meeting at 9:00 AM?
That's normally when we have our special meetings that we vote on. Tonight, these are, these are public hearings tonight, so...
Why can't it be at 6:00 in the evening, when people can attend, when these kids can attend? Right? I mean, is that like too much to ask, to have it at 6:00 at night? I mean, two of these people work daytime.
We understand that.
Morris Farms? You know about Morris Farms?
I know where Morris Farm is, and I know that our kids go to school there, yes.
Okay, evidently, that property's for sale.
Who did you say would be contacting me? Did you have somebody in mind?
I forget her first name. Tex Morris's wife.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's wonderful. Actually, anybody that has property...
On TV, you had said, "If anybody knows of any property for sale, let us know."
Yes, please.
Well, you can't get much, you can't get much closer to New Martinsville than, than right there.
Yeah, correct, correct. Yes, please, anyone, live streaming, anyone that has access to property that we can look at and vet. And please, we would be more than welcoming of that.
And our, and our coaching staff here at Payton City High School?
Yes, we'd rather have more coaches than not enough. Thank you.
Janet Turner.
Good evening. I don't have to introduce myself. I have spoken several times to you all. The question I am asking, and I can answer it. Why was there poor attendance at the Magnolia public hearing? There were more people who opposed it than there were in favor of it if you took away the faculty of the two schools. Why was there not anybody there? They're not losing anything. They're keeping their community schools. They may gain new students, get a great band, bigger, better sports team, and then in the end, keeping their identities. But that remains to be seen. This is to the board. How much research, and I know you can't answer the question, okay? How much research have you all done concerning pros and cons of consolidating, which is really merging these two schools? I certainly hope you have. But of course, you aren't allowed to answer any questions. I can't understand that. I know it's a state code. You all were elected by the people for the people. After this public meeting, why are you allowed to address the people who you put in office? I have sent emails, my husband and I, and numerous other people, phone calls, and only one ever responded. Thank you, Mr. Glasscock. Christine hasn't been in there long enough to get emails from me. On the current board of five members, there are three reps from the New Martinsville area. One from the Reader area, one from the Folsom area. What about Payton City? How fair is that for our community to not have a representative on the board? State Senator Mike Stewart is proposing deconsolidation instead of consolidation. And I quote, "School boards aren't spending enough time considering the impacts the closing will have on the surrounding area, as well as what it will have on students themselves." End of quote. You can read this through Metro News, the whole article. I suggest you take the time to read this, and even look at the articles by Danny Glover from Washington DC, which states the facts. In conclusion, I just hope and pray when you walk into county office November 22nd at 9:00 AM to vote on this proposal, that you have researched beforehand and not left this up entirely to Superintendent Porter. And remember Senator Stewart's message, "School boards aren't spending enough time considering the impact on our students and community." And definitely, a few months is not long enough when you're changing so many lives. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. It's 8:27, so at 8:32, we'll reconvene.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, it's 8:27, so at 8:32 we'll reconvene.
Logically, okay, I can see the reasons that you've given for making this move. Don't necessarily agree with them, but I can understand them. My concern tonight is financial. Right now, you have some support for consolidation throughout the county. Right now, the plan to consolidate Peyton City and Magnolia and Valley and Hundred using the existing facilities. If this is the only step, and you're going to stay two county schools and build two brand-new schools, okay. But if the ultimate goal, which I've heard repeated, is to go to one county school, I see this as an unnecessary step. What I foresee in the future is the people of this county never approving another bond levy. Oil and gas money's going to dry up. I foresee students leaving in droves to other counties because we can't pass a bond levy. I've seen it happen in Ohio multiple times. I've seen it happen in this state multiple times where counties can't pass levies. I'm afraid that this could happen eventually in this county because I don't know any student that wants to go to a school for four or five years that's not going to exist after that. I've spoken to many people in this county, out in the county, around the county, north into the county, and they've all said that they've seen this as kind of a waste of taxpayer money, this step to go to two, then to one. And the few that I've spoken to have said, if this is the way that it's going to be run, they're never voting for another levy. Some of them are very... Have a whole lot of property in this county. Not big farms or anything like this, they're just... Own lots of properties. So they have a huge tax base. Right now, their taxes are paying a lot into the levies. But they don't want to see this two to one. And I've seen signs here tonight, one school, one move. It's not that we're all against consolidation. We're against this to this to this. Find the land. Build the new school. I know that I have emailed the board members. I don't know that I've emailed Ms. Mitchell because I don't know that she was... Because you're the newest one, I think. But I've emailed the other four in the past, many ideas that I've had. And I'm willing to sit down and talk to any of you away from this meeting about the thousands of ideas that are bouncing around in my head because most of them are a better idea than what we have right now. I don't think that this two to one is any good for anybody in the county. If we're going to go to one school, bite the bullet and do it. I don't want to see it happen. Like I said, I'm leaving my emotions at the door. Peyton City High School is a legacy for me. I didn't graduate from here, sorry. But it's a legacy for me. My grandfather was one of the five men, I think five men, that got this school to be open. There has been someone in my family playing sports in this town for 60 years. I have three family members that were Senior Athlete of the Year, one of them being my son. This school is a legacy to my family. So no, I don't want to see it closed. But I don't want to leave my emotions at the door. Logically, this two to one, no. Bite the bullet, do it the right way. As the woman said earlier, follow the example that... I think it was Rowan County. I think that's where Spencer's at. Follow the example that they did. We can build new schools. Magnolia High School was built pretty quick. Valley High School was built pretty quick. Hundred High School was built pretty quick. The kids still went to school there when they were building those schools. So it had to be done quick. We can do it. Get the land, build the school. One school, one move. Do it once, and we're done with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marley Amos.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Most of you all know me, my name is Marley Amos. I'm a current fifth-grade teacher at New Martinsville School. I was unable to attend the previous meetings held earlier this week due to after-school robotics practice where I'm a coach. So I do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in favor of school consolidation, an important step that can enhance educational opportunities, improve resource efficiency, and build stronger communities. By merging schools, we can ensure that all students, regardless of where they live, have access to high-quality teachers, advanced technology, and specialized programs that smaller schools might struggle to provide. Consolidation allows for better allocation of funds, reducing operational costs that can be redirected into classroom resources, extracurricular activities, and even new opportunities for students. With fewer administrative overheads, we can focus on what truly matters, delivering an enriching educational experience for our children. Moreover, combining schools fosters collaboration and diversity. Students from different backgrounds and communities can come together, learning from one another, and building a stronger, more united social networks that will serve them well into adulthood. While change can be difficult, consolidation is not about taking away options. It's about strengthening the foundation of education for all students. Let's invest in a future where every child has access to the best possible education, no matter where they come from. Our Wiltso County students are already leaving their small community schools, and why? Because better opportunities lie elsewhere, not far away. Parents and teacher alike always want what is best for their children. All Wiltso County students deserve better. We have the opportunity to deliver. While many people may not agree on this topic, can we just stop and ask ourselves, if we could give our students the advantage to set them up for greatness, why wouldn't we? Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Lynn Wyatt.
Good evening, board members, administrators, fellow students, staff, and concerned persons. My name is Grace Lynn Wyatt, and tonight I address you not only as a concerned student, but the class president for the seventh grade. This is our first year in school, in this school. But that doesn't mean we don't have feelings and concerns about it. Today during our flex period, one of our free class periods, our teachers encouraged us to ask questions about the meeting tonight and write down our thoughts. The following thoughts are on our behalf of myself and my classmates. This school is more what you think it is. This school is a family. I've been for the school for one year, and I've never seen such a school where people stick up for one another, no matter who you are. If you combine schools, it could increase fights, it could not be safe. It will not be safe. For the last... These last years have been one of the best years of my life. I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking for the kids, the teachers, and our county, our community, and Peyton City. This school is home to us, and you want to take it away from us. If you shut down our school, these kids will go to Tyler or homeschool, not just Peyton City. New Martinsville's kids, too. Think about how this makes us feel. All of you care about the money, but this school, it's not just about the money. This school, this one school I've been to for almost two years, my first time in the middle school, I have not felt more loved in my life. And I never want to leave this school. This school is filled with love and happiness, and you guys want to take it away from us. I believe that Peyton City deserves to stay open. What are your plans for the property after you take it down? What are you guys going to do when you take our home from us? Do you know the importance of this school to us? Why do you want to do this? Do you know that you're putting us... Do you know what you're putting us through, how this could affect our mental health? And as someone who has struggled with mental health for a while, this is making it 10 times worse. Not just for me, but everyone else who has struggled through mental health. My friends know what I've been through, other people that I don't even know know what I have been through. You don't know what it's like to have a school ripped away from you that you love because you're not us, you're not Peyton City. You don't know what all of these... If we could do a petition and we could outvote all of you, and we would win to keep our school open. It's reason after reason on why you want to take our school away from us. When is it going to end? When? Doesn't make sense. Do you think this is a good idea? Because none of us think it is. None of us believe that is a good idea at all. Do you realize the pain and confusion that you have caused on us, that are still caused? The first time I was at a meeting for this, I didn't even go to Peyton City, but both my sisters did at the time, they still do. One is a senior, one is a sophomore. I didn't want to go to Peyton City because I didn't want to leave my old school. When I have been to New Martinsville for six years, and then I have also been to Tyler for one year. This is my second year in seventh... This is my first year in seventh grade, last year I was at the elementary school. Best two years that I ever had in my life. One of my classmates said this, and this is her first year in Peyton City. This is why I think you shouldn't merge schools. This is why you should keep Peyton City open. This school and the people have truly turned my life around. This, the school, the people in the school has made me smile, made me feel more confident with myself. It has made me become more confident in myself, making me a better and nicer person. I have so many good friends and I had just gotten here. Everyone is so nice to me, and it makes me feel good about me in general. I'm so much happier. And this last part really gets to me. This is why I want to go to school now. Obviously, at her old school, she was not doing well, but this, this school is why she wants to be here. She wants to keep going on and learning, and we need a better education. And if we merge schools together, that's not going to happen. I think what you're doing is wrong. Peyton City School has been open for a long time, and it's the best school for me and other kids.
Thank you.
My first question is, what are your plans for the property and moving it forward after you shut us down? What are your plans to do with this property?
The property would be auctioned off, sold, or donated.
So for money? Okay. Do you know the importance of this school?
Could you repeat that?
Do you know the importance of this school to us? Do you know why we want to keep doing it?
I think that's a subjective question, and we have heard why, and we are compassionate to those reasons.
But are you? Because it seems, not just to me, but for a lot of people here, that this just seems it's all for money. That's what it seems like.
Were those all of your questions?
Do you... Why do you think it's a good idea?
We do have a copy of the impact statement, if you would like to review it.
Do you realize the pain and confusion that you've all caused us? Because one minute it's open, then it's shut, then it's open, and then we don't know what's going on.
I really do appreciate you speaking to us tonight. A lot of your questions are subjective.
Okay.
Thank you. Becky Hayes.
Well, here I am again. You all should know me by now. Peyton City is our go-to place. We have no other entertainment. Hope you all sleep well tonight, knowing that you will take away the only life we have. I hope that Gavel finds you... I hope that gavel finds you peace.
The next speaker is Mackenzie Simkins.
Hello. Sorry if I sound awful, I've been sick, but, um, hi, my name is Mackenzie Simkins, and I am a senior here at Payden City High School. I am the senior class president, and I hope that today I can represent some of my fellow classmates. I participate in many things, including marching, concert, jazz, and pep band, and I'm also a co-section leader with one of the most, of one of the most incredible drum lines in the state. I am also in softball, track, volleyball, thespians, and National Honors Society. I have plenty, I've had plenty of experience doing these things that I could never imagine losing. Today, I am beyond proud to stand in the footsteps of my great-grandfather, Owen McKay, and my grandfather Frank McKay, a nineteen seventy-three graduate, who both fought for this school in the past. Now that I've talked about me, let's talk about us. My first point is, I'm trying to look forward into my future and what may come next for me. I know where I'm going to college and what I am doing, but I can't help but to worry for my underclassmen friends who aren't sure what their future holds. I've rethought my future plans to become a teacher because of this summer. That says a lot. I have also lost many teachers that I love dearly because of this poor excuse of a consolidation. Mr. Cooper, Mrs. Massey, Coach Barkus, Mr. Riggel, and Mrs. Householder, to name a few. So yes, I have lost some opportunities because of you, not because of PCHS, but because of you. You keep saying that you are doing the best for your students and that you've been for, been doing so for thirty-something years, but when we tell you that this is not what is best for us, you ignore that. My first question is, do you think that the Board of Education could have done better with the communication of these topics? On your part, do you admit that there have been many lies or misinformation towards Payden City High School and Payden City High School students? My fourth point is, don't get me wrong when I say that I am against a merger. I am against merging the schools, but I'm not entirely against a true consolidation. I think that a consolidation can be beneficial in many ways, but I also think that it can be harmful in some ways. If this is done correctly, it could lead to great things, but the way that we are talking about going about this just doesn't seem right to me. We need new everything for everyone. My second question is, are there any negatives of consolidation that have, that you have looked into and that you are willing to share? There seems to be miss, many positives spoken about, but what are the negatives that could affect students and teachers on both sides? My third question is, if you could go back to this summer, would you change the way you did anything? What would you have done differently from your current perspective, and do you have any regrets? Please keep in mind how mentally challenging this summer was for some students. Some didn't really care much, and some cared so much that it caused their mental health to rapidly decline. And if you don't mind, I would appreciate a plan to prevent that for your future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. I'm sorry you don't feel good, dear. Um, of course, it's a change. So some people do see that as a negative. Um, in life, we do have to go through changes. Like you said, you're gonna attend college next year. That'll be a big change in your life, and you'll probably go through many changes throughout your life. I know probably all of us adults in this building have had changes, so yes, a negative right now is consolidation, is of the consolidation is the change and, and the uncertainty of what's happening and the ups and downs.
Yeah, the uncertainty is the problem. That we would like some certainty.
Sure.
It's very uncertain.
Yes.
And that's an issue.
And we, we really do hope to get that cleared up, trust built, moving in the right direction, and maybe one day, after you're finished with college and your degree and your career, you'll choose to come back to Wetzel County and maybe start a family one day.
Probably not. Honestly, probably not. Anywhere but Wetzel County at this point. That's, if I'm being honest.
Well, I hope we all have choices, so, yes, of course. I know you've brought up about the summer and regrets. Uh, I regret causing any harm on anybody, any ill feelings on anyone. Um, I don't know that anyone in this room, probably besides the people sitting up front, maybe a few people in the audience, understand what actually went through and all the, all that was involved in, um, shutting down the school because of the situation. So that's, that's a whole nother topic which we probably shouldn't talk about tonight because it's not part of our, um, issue tonight. So, do I have regrets? Um, I'd like to think that I'm always looking for the best for students and not having any regrets. Can we change things? Sure. We're all human, we all can do things differently, looking back. Again, I meant no ill harm or ill will on anyone.
Can I ask about why I found out through Facebook? Why it wasn't said at the end of the year?
That's probably something we shouldn't talk about tonight. It's not on our agenda, but you can see me after.
Or an email.
Or email, yes, please email me, and I'll be down to see you guys.
It kinda sucked. Finding out through Facebook. If I'm being honest, that was quite.
Thank you for being honest.
Could have been better.
I appreciate that, yes, thank you.
So, let's fix that.
Sure.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Clark.
Be with me, southern folks, I moved here from the Midwest, and we'll talk fast. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Clark, and I live in Payden City. I did not grow up here, and I have never attended school here. In fact, when I first arrived, I was very quietly proconsolidation. So while there are plenty of people here who are deeply qualified to give you impassioned speeches about how much they love this school and this town, I don't have that resume. What I do have, as usual, are a few things I've read that changed my mind and that I think you should know. First, I read a study on school consolidations in rural Nebraska. This study has been endorsed by the National Council of Professors of Educational Administration. One of the primary concerns in this study is the idea of social capital, interestingly, also a topic in our shared county book study this year. In places with high social capital, where residents trust other people, join organizations, volunteer, vote, and socialize, there are healthier children, fewer teen pregnancies, less violence and less crime. However, quote, "When community interests were ignored during consolidation proceedings, absenteeism and community disintegration increased as social capital was eroded and schools were no longer seen as contributors to the local community as the best and brightest students were being shipped away. In these communities, an earlier round of consolidations had already had damaging effects in the nineteen sixties. Residents reported closed businesses, fewer social connections between neighbors, loss of young adults from the community, and difficulty in replacing aging-town doctors, accountants, and other key professions." The study goes so far as to say that respondents simply accepted the fact that their communities would never recover. But does that matter? Are these tiny communities acceptable collateral damage? President Thomas Jefferson didn't think so. As paraphrased by this study, Jefferson understood that informal, small networks of civic engagement and community organizations are what inspire cooperation and mutual responsibility. And what are these informal networks? The very ties of social capital created by having a public school in your community. The study concludes that although students will inevitably socially adjust to consolidation while they're in school, as kids do, they will be less likely to return to their home communities as contributing members afterward, and the community as a whole will decline. Moreover, the author aptly compares rural communities like this one to canaries in a coal mine. As we go, others will follow. Ignore at your own peril. Okay, so consolidation is bad for this town, because, you know, we're the one losing our school, but the kids will adjust, right? Study said so. And the quality of a consolidated education is too good to pass up, right? Well, let's take a look at another study, this one from rural Canada. Just like in the U.S., consolidation has been pushed through rural Canadian districts by powerful, wealthy outsiders with no stakes in the survival of their respective communities. They too push a narrative of small-town backwardness and ignorance and insist there is no legitimate resistance to consolidation efforts. But this study by Barbara Barter of the Memorial University of Newfoundland, available upon request, found that system administrators often simply refuse to acknowledge counterarguments and instead push a single-minded narrative that denies the complexities of reality. Moreover, Barter posits that although often ignored, teachers are in a unique position to both observe and express the on-the-ground realities for themselves and their students. So what did teachers report in these newly consolidated classrooms? One, longer commutes made it more difficult for teachers to invest in coaching and administering other extracurricular activities. Two, transportation difficulties as well as long bus rides led to students and families becoming less engaged in school activities and events, even among those who were extremely involved preconsolidation. Three, students who live in outlying communities are more likely to be affected by local issues such as flooding or road closures that lead them to missing school days that other students are still able to attend. Number four, changes in teaching duties, courses, classrooms, et cetera, creates just as much upheaval for students as teachers, including teachers reporting spending more time planning, differentiating, assessing, and grading outside of their contract hours. Five, schools built in out-of-the-way places in an effort to serve multiple communities experienced higher staff turnover rates as community ties became strained and weakened. Number six, many teachers refrain from speaking out about these realities because they fear retaliation. I could continue, um, but just in closing, don't just listen to these community members and business owners and students who love this little town and then go home thinking you can discount them all as backwards, ignorant, or selfish. The facts don't support consolidation either. So beware. The vision you're following may turn out to be a mirage.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Johanna McGuinness.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to say that I was born and raised in Wetzel County. I attended Wetzel County schools. I graduated from Magnolia. The main thing I always heard the entire time that I associated with the school in, in Magnolia was how we didn't need four schools in the county. Wetzel County does not need more schools, especially when Payden City and Wetzel County are in such close proximity to each other. Besides that, Payden City is so small, the community is so small. They'll never make it. They can't do anything, they're too small to accomplish anything. Well, let me put it this way, and goodness knows I'm stating my age when I say this. That was over forty-eight years ago. Payden City High School is still proudly here. Not only are they still here, but they're still producing students who have, who have become lawyers, doctors, proud members of our community, willing to help in any way they can to help our school and our community, you name it, they're there. You don't have to ask, they volunteer, as you could see from the turnout you had tonight. The main thing I keep hearing is how much bigger and better Magnolia will be. Not Valley, not Hundred, not Payden City High School, Magnolia, with whatever name you choose to call it. The information that I've gotten and has been spoken about tonight is also that the change is still pretty much up in the air as to whether there will be a change in the name, mascot, colors, whatever. The last meeting, you know, uh, well, let me say this. I want to ask you, at what cost is all this gonna come? And I don't mean money-wise. I mean, at the last meeting, where they only had two speakers for consolidation, one of those speakers said, he had a real, and this is quoting, "He had a real problem with someone saying that if a school shuts down, the town goes with it, and it's not the school's responsibility for a city's success or failures." He couldn't be more wrong. Let me ask you, how can a city succeed if there's nothing to draw people to it? Without our school and the revenue it brings, then what happens? We don't have Walmart, we don't have theaters, we don't have the regatta like New Martinsville does. We have our school. Our school is our community, and our community is our school. During the drought, when Valley was having their water issues, Mrs. Porter, you made a statement in the news that how important Valley is to that community. You said how important a school is for a community to survive. Your words were, "Valley High School is a big part of the community. Our number-one goal is taking care of the students and also taking care of the community as well." This is your quote from the intelligence here on November the second. My question is, so how is our high school and our community any less important? People want to live where their kids can attend school, not to be bused to another town, and why would they? Why wouldn't they just live in the other town? And what about those that have more than one child? Is the child in the elementary school gonna want to have their sibling going to a different town? No, I can answer that. And the reason I can answer that is because I have talked to other p- parents who have children in that exact situation. They have some in the elementary school and some in the high school. And they were told, mommy, if they go to the other school, I don't want to be down here, I want to be at that school with, where, I want to be at that area where they're at, because it wouldn't be the same. That's not fair. That's not fair to those kids. And the thing is, excuse me, while I'm on the subject, say this, say you go ahead with this, uh, with this merger, and the students move up from the elementary to the high school, and we have no high school. Well, my question is this, what'll happen as our elementary school attendance dwindles? Then what happens? Will our sh- will, will our elementary school also get shut down? Then what'll happen to our community? What's left of it by then?
Thank you. I asked the audience to please make sure you're not talking during somebody's presentation. Thank you. Our next speaker is Tiffany Hayes.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany Hayes, and my son is Dalton Hayes. I have to say, I've stayed rather quiet through all of this while still supporting my son. However, this past couple of days have gone, I've gone back and forth on whether or not to speak, ultimately deciding I cannot stay quiet any longer. Even though I know you're all aware of who my son is, I have to ask, do you really know him? If you do, then you know he is extremely outgoing, happy, dedicated, driven, caring. I could go on and on. Lately, though, the past two months specifically, he has really struggled, to the point where I've had his friends, trusted adults and teachers, reach out to me. I'm thankful that he has these people in his life that care the way they do. My husband and I have seen the change, and we are dealing with it as a family. I'm here to say that what you're doing is detrimental to the mental well-being of these students. My son is an example. To say I am upset is an understatement. I have felt all the feelings, upset, anger, disappointment, disgust, because truthfully, I don't think you have these students' best interests at heart. You can't, or you would understand and realize that you are going about this the wrong way. While my son has kept his grades up and he's still dedicated to his work, the fire is just not there this year. So far, his whole junior year has been overshadowed with constant fear of the future. Do you know how upsetting it is to see your once-positive, unsure-of-life child resort to being scared, unsure, and worried every single day? He has worried himself so much that he's lost almost twenty pounds and lasted six weeks. It's absolutely heartbreaking. You all need to do better. You're hurting our children. I'm not opposed to a consolidation. I know people don't want to hear that, but I believe a consolidation is what needs to happen for all students to have a greater opportunity for a better education. With that being said, though, what you're doing is not a true consolidation. A consolidation involves a plan in time. It does not happen overnight. It does not happen in a year. A consolidation involves a new building with a new name, colors, and mascot. It's an even playing field and fresh start for all students and staff involved. It's one school and one move. We shouldn't have to watch our son fret his whole junior year away and worry himself sick about what his senior year is going to be. I know you've heard it over and over again, and I can't help but wonder if you take any of it in. But please consider what you're doing and do- But please consider what you're doing and do better. Do better for all the students and staff who are involved, because they truly deserve it. And I need to add to this, Ms. Porter, I do not mean any disrespect when I say it, but please do not say that my son does not understand what's going on. He understands it. He lives it, and he feels it deeply, and that is why we are where we are today. Thank you all.
Thank you. He's listed on here twice. Okay, the last person then to speak tonight is Weldon Williams.
Hard to believe when they told me that I spoke to the Board of Education fourteen years ago, addressing this same problem and same issue, so here we are again. Mrs. Porter, you don't know me the rest. Everybody else behind the counter there knows who I am, I've worked with and volunteered with ninety-nine percent of them. So, just so you know, I am the local funeral director. You know, I have gone to West Liberty. I have a Bachelor of Science, Bachelor of Arts, one of them's in education, business education. I've been in this county for twenty-seven years with businesses, multiple businesses, so I do have some understanding. And the complaint, or not the complaint, the pleas tonight have been many, mine's that of economics, okay? I don't know that we've talked about that enough tonight. So, in all the classes that I had at West Liberty, the first thing that they drilled into your head was location, location, location. And if you've ever had a business class, I'm sure it was drilled into your head. I picked my locations. I picked three communities to be in: New Martinsville, Pine Grove, and Peyton City, because each one of them were their own little communities, and they functioned very well. Not saying that Hundred doesn't, but I just don't feel like traveling across four hills to get to Hundred. The other thing that was drilled into my head was that for, to be a community, it has to have four components. It has to have a store, and that's someplace where you can either go pick up little quick incidentals, or it's a store big enough that it supplies all your grocery needs. It has to have a church, someplace where you can go exercise your religious beliefs, a post office, some way for you to get packages in and out of a community. And I understand that's changing a little with UPS and FedEx and so forth, but the concept is still there. And the fourth and last thing is a school. If you remove any one of those components, it is not very long before it's no longer a community. It's just a dot on a map. Most of you have been around since the consolidation back in the late '60s, early '70s, and if you think about it, these are nothing but dots on a map. Grandview, Littleton, Burton, Folsom, Smithfield, Jacksonburg, and Earnshaw. Because of the consolidations, we went from all those communities down to four communities. If we consolidate again, there'll be no communities, because you're going to end up putting schools out in the middle of the country somewhere, and there's no communities If you'd have told me when I was in school that I would have been crazy enough to go three-quarters of a million dollars in debt based upon communities, I would have told you you were nuts. Here I am, and I'm still paying on that three-quarter of a million dollars. I'd like to see the end of that loan term and not have to struggle or not have to wonder and worry how I'm going to pay that huge, huge debt. I gave each one of you a copy of The Informer, and it was funny, when Rodney asked me to address the board, that there is an article in there, page 4A, that you need to read, somebody that's not from Wetzel County, talking about when you do a consolidation, you have fewer students, you have a lower property value, and a lower tax base. Don't know that that's something we can afford. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I misspoke. My notes were kind of scribbly. My memory was kind of bad. Morris Farms is not for sale. I had a conversation with them, and I brought it up to them that the county is looking for land, and I want to apologize to everybody here. Boys, this is adversity. Sometimes you make mistakes. I didn't mean to say that the property is for sale. I apologize to the Morris family, and it is a beautiful piece of property, and it would make a nice place for a school. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for clearing that up. I believe that's the end of our delegations to speak, unless I missed somebody on the list. Is there anyone else that had signed up? What's your name?
Shawna Williams-Yoho.
Oh, Shawna. All right, let me see. Okay, Shawna, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Williams-Yoho, and I am a graduate of Peyton City High School. At this present time, I am president of the Peyton City High School Alumni Association. A successful school doesn't end its relationship with the students and upon graduation. Rather than forgetting the graduates, a school should want to see its legacy live and help those who have walked its halls and become successful citizens. One very important way a school maintains a connection with its graduates is through alumni association. I realize that not all schools, and especially larger ones, enjoy the benefits of an alumni association. In fact, it's often smaller schools who work extra hard to maintain their associations. In Peyton City, our alumni association was formed a few short years after the first graduates received their diplomas in 1952 and has been active ever since. The association has participated in school events and sponsored activities for the students for decades, including award scholarships to graduating seniors. But perhaps more importantly, the alumni association offers a permanent connection between students, graduates, school, and community that can't be replaced. When a school closes, the alumni association slowly diminishes, and some even, as alumni die off, the school dies too. Furthermore, the loyalty doesn't automatically transfer to the new school. The graduates of the new school are responsible for establishing their own alumni association. The sad truth is, when schools consolidate, the alumni association often never gets off the ground. We know a situation just like this in a neighboring county, where a consolidated school has existed for thirty years, and yet there is little or no evidence of an active alumni association. Alumni associates offer a way for graduates of a school to unite and reunite, graduates from different decades and even different generations. The Patency Alumni Association has members that represent children, parents, and grandparents of the same families. It's a multi-generational organization that doesn't get replaced or reestablished in a few years. It takes decades and lifetimes to get to where the Patency Alumni Association is today. And closing PCHS will slowly and very methodically turn that clock the other way, and with each passing year, the association on all the goodness is accomplished for the student, school, graduates, and community railroad away until it's just a memory. So closing a school building and moving the students that attend to another school in another town does more than shutter a physical piece of property. It forever breaks paths of connectivity, it destroys support systems, and it hastens the decay of a physical community and a silastic community. I want to say in closing, as a past graduate and president, again, of the alumni association, I feel that it is time that we unite and keep Wetzel County schools as they are, a blessing, a blessing that they have been and will continue to be for all future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And once again, I do apologize for missing your name on the list. Is there anyone else? So then, at this time, I make the motion for adjournment. Is there a second? Motion made by Mrs. Foner, seconded by Mrs. Nice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.